Okay. Alrighty, good afternoon all. Before we start with our work session, with our work session for the day, we have a couple of things to take care of regarding our closed meeting and our forum. But before we get to that, I would like to take role to ensure that we have all of the school board members with us. Ms. Cohen?
Here.
Welcome back. Ms. Corbett Sanders? Ms. Darnak Kofax? Oh, thank you. Ms. Darnak Kofax? Okay, we'll come back. Mr. Frisch?
I'm here.
Ms. Keys-Gamara? Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Marin?
Here.
Ms. Omeish?
Here.
Ms. Pakarski?
Hi, I'm here.
Please mute your mics if you're not responding. Ms. Tolan?
I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Sizmore Heiser?
I'm here.
And Ms. Darnak Kofax?
I'm here.
And Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Here.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on September 15, 2020. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. And we have Ms. Omeish, who has moved that motion, and we have a second by Ms. Cohen. All in favor, all in support of this motion, please raise your hand. We have Ms. Omeish, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Sizmore Heiser, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Pakarski, Ms. Marin, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Frisch, and Bacardi Anderson, and that is unanimous. Thank you all for convening close. We are now going to engage in one of our forum topics. Our forum topics will be chaired by our vice chair, Ms. Pakarski. So, Ms. Pakarski, please go ahead and proceed. I know we have one topic for this afternoon.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. We are running a few minutes behind, so we will only be getting to one topic, and the topic is centered around public engagement. I would like to invite Ms. Marin and Ms. Sizmore Heiser to go ahead and introduce their forum topic.
Great. I can go ahead and start. Thank you for keeping this on the agenda for today. So, members, colleagues, as you know, in February, Ms. Sizmore Heiser and I put forth a forum topic to help advance the work of the Board's Public Engagement Committee. One of the core functions of the Public Engagement Committee is to give input in form to our advisory committees, of which we have many, and we have constituents who have very generously volunteered their time on a number of topics. In fact, in just a few weeks, we'll be hearing weekly the reports of their year-long work. However, due to many of us having been representatives on these committees prior to being elected and from talking with our appointees over the years, it's clear that more clarity and process, you know, protocols be instituted so that members can really best do this work and inform our work. You know, their goal is to inform the school board's work. So, we ask you to please approve and support this forum topic so that the Public Engagement Committee can move forward with creating suggested updates to the work, to better the work of the advisory committees, which we will continue, the Public Engagement Committee will continue to inform the Board of what is developing, and then ultimately, I believe, to seek Board approval on changes that would be forthcoming to advisory committees. But this would allow the Public Engagement Committee to initiate that work. Ms. Sizmore Heiser, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, no, I, that was, I think that was a great explanation, Ms. Marin, so I don't have too much more to add, but I do want to say that, you know, we're looking really at all of our committee structures. It's our committees, our task force, our councils that help inform the Board's work, the advisory committees and internal committees, and how do, how can we best enhance those committee offerings, enhance the work of those committees, the structures, the working norms? As part of the charge of the Public Engagement Committee is twofold, both on how do we engage and how do we communicate, and really, how do we help our constituents and our own Board do our work more efficiently? So, this is, and I believe our Board committees have not really been looked at holistically for a while, so this is really something that could help inform the work of public engagement that fits really well with the charge of the Engagement Committee, and then the results, the findings we would bring back to the entire Board for Board discussion before we implement anything, and we'd have to work with our Governance Committee as well. But it's really just to find, have a way to better engage and serve our committees through, our community, excuse me, through our committee structures and the work and processes of our committees.
Thank you, Ms. Sizmore Heiser. I think we will go ahead now. I see you have a few people who'd like to ask questions. Ms. Tolan, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to say I've had numbers of conversations with both Ms. Marin and Ms. Sizmore Heiser and others around this topic, and given the, just what I have seen, the amazing representation that we have from our community on these various committees, and I'm thrilled for the people that I've been able to appoint to these committees in moving forward this year, making sure that we utilize their time wisely and their expertise in the best manner possible is imperative. And I think that this relook at the committees and how they're structured and the timing of the report, how they fit in with the budget cycle, et cetera, is super important. So, I fully support this. I also hope that the scope of this will include, you know, as Ms. Sizmore Heiser said, looking at, you know, overarching at these committees, you know, there may be some committees that we don't have that we need. Technology, for example, is such a huge issue, you know, for us right now, and that's not something that we have as a standing committee, you know, how would that interact with what Dr. Brayburn's doing? Also, I'm a huge advocate, of course, for, you know, looking comprehensively at our county development and data around development and capacity issues. So, you know, how does, you know, Ms. Cohen and I have been looking at the Comprehensive Planning and Development Committee, how does that fit in as well? So, hopefully, we can do this comprehensively, and I appreciate the willingness to do the hard work that this will take. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Corbett Sanders, please go ahead.
Yes, and thank you, ladies, for making this, bringing this forum topic to the whole Board. I do think that this Board's commitment to continuous process improvement mandates that we should always take a fresh look at things, and so I look at this as part of that continuous process improvement. But in the spirit of transparency, I do ask that as we look at this initiative, that we bring in representatives from our advisory committees and that we formally survey them for their input, because I know, like the two ladies that made the forum topic, we've all served on these advisory committees in the past. However, that those are anecdotal experiences of each of us individually on individual committees. And so I think it is helpful for us to make sure that we survey those that are active. And then the other thing that I would suggest is that we might want to look at the length of time by which people are appointed to committees, because, as you know, we typically appoint every year for a one-year assignment, and so that appointment is made in July at the same time that we confirm the committee charges for each of the committees. However, to undertake much of this work, it may behoove us to look at a longer period of time for making those appointments rather than just one year, because one year gets them started in September and they're drafting in March so that they can have it approved by May, and that means that they're only, they're actually only meeting six times before they make a recommendation. And I did send a recommendation also as, on the tenure to both of you ladies, if there is a change in Board representation, that the new Board members should always have the opportunity to appoint their own citizens. Thank you.
May I respond to that briefly, Ms. Pakarski?
Yeah, please do.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, those are all great suggestions, and as part of the work, if this is approved, as the Public Engagement Committee looks at it, those are definitely things that we should look at in our working norms and processes as we're developing new standards. And so I'm glad that you're on the committee as well, because those are some great ideas that we can work on. So, I agree. I think the things we should be looking at as we work on this charge.
Thank you.
Excellent. I think we have Ms. McLaughlin next.
Yes, thank you. I do want to point out for the public that since Ms. Kofax and I've served for eight years, we have certainly seen the historical evolution on the Board's committees. And when I joined over eight and a half years ago, there were six brand-new Board members, and some of us talked about the need for realigning our advisory committees to perhaps be more substantive to the day-to-day operational experiences that our families, students, and employees have. So, I wanted to make sure, Ms. Sizmore Heiser, you made the comment, it's been a long time. I would ask that our clerk of the Board gather that historical information for the Board. I don't remember the exact year, but I do remember being a member of Governance where I spent probably more than a year with the Governance Committee, looking at our existing committees, advisory committees, not just their membership, but which ones they were, would we reduce any of them? It was during Karen Garza's tenure, and in the end, the Board decided they wanted to just mostly maintain the status quo. However, in my tenure, what has changed is we now have a Facilities Advisory Committee to the Board, which used to be the Comprehensive Planning and Development Committee, and then we also added the Human Resources Advisory Committee, which we'd never had one before focused on employees and human resources. So, some progress has been made, but I fully support this. I would just ask that the PEC really consult the records of the Governance Committee work in the past, so you're not necessarily losing that historical work that was done. And then finally, I would just say to Karen Corbett Sanders' point, our advisory committees, I'm continuing to note that we aren't always appointing people with subject matter expertise. And so I would ask that that be part of the conversation. FPAC is one of our only advisory committees where people apply, they have to have that subject matter expertise. It's actually a committee of, subcommittee of the Board that reviews applicants across the county with Magisterial Board Member and At-Large Member input. Ultimately, recommendations are made to the full Board, but right now, it's a lot, it's pro forma. We don't vet necessarily who's on the advisory committees, and I have had some appointees who choose to step off because they don't feel that it's, that the committees themselves represent people with subject matter expertise, and therefore, they don't feel that the work is necessarily coming with a lens of advising the Board with expertise. So, I think those are going to be important things to consider in this work going forward.
Ms. Pakarski? Can I just clarify, or can I clarify? So, colleagues, just so you know, the purpose of this forum topic is to allow the Public Engagement Committee to begin the gathering of input heard thus far, that kind of input, and then actually, the forum topic says that we would bring it to a work session. So, it could, you know, hold on to those great ideas, please, in the interest of time. Focus here is, are you approving that this is something worthy of the Public Engagement Committee's time to then go forward and engage you all and current members and bring it to a work session or further conversation? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin, for that reminder that we do have a very lengthy afternoon with some serious topics for discussion. Ms. Darnak Kofax, you're next.
Hi, yes. I was on the Public Engagement Committee with both Ms. Marin and Roshna last year, and I do, I am glad you made the clarification, Ms. Marin, about the need to gather the data and bring the information to the full Board, because I think there were conversations when we originally spoke that, you know, the Public Engagement Committee would be kind of doing more substantive, more decision-making, which I was not, which I was concerned about, because the committees are all part of the Board as a whole. So, I will support this. I think, as Ms. McLaughlin noted, there has been some work done, so gathering that data, talking to people who've been around, who've done it, I think that's all important. And as she said, in the end, we ended up kind of status quo, but it's important to have that discussion particularly with all the new members and what your thought processes are. So, the fact that you'll start the work, that you'll bring to, and it may be more than one work session, I would respectfully tell the Chair and Vice Chair when we're looking at the totality of the analysis of this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Darnak Kofax, Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. I want to thank Roshna and Melanie for bringing this forward. At the last Board meeting in September, we approved all of my appointments to the various advisory committees, and I'm excited that they're going to have an opportunity to serve. And one of the things that I talked with them about when interviewing the various people who were interested in serving was about the prospect of, you know, working with everybody to reimagine what these committees look like and to think through what best practices might be able to be developed. And so, I'm excited that we're finally taking that step, and I will be voting for this today, and I look forward to getting to work on the Public Engagement Committee as this moves forward. So, thanks again for bringing this forward. I know it's something that many of us have been talking about for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. I think we are ready to take a vote on this, for this to go to the PAC Committee, to be worked on, and then to go to a work session with some of their recommendations or to Ms. Darnak Kofax. So, I'd like to see who would be supportive of moving this forward and supporting the forum. Looks like Mr. Frisch, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Sizmore Heiser, Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin, and myself. That is unanimous. Thank you, everybody, and I think we will slowly transition straight into the next portion.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Sizmore Heiser and Ms. Marin. We do have to take a short, one-minute break to allow our technicians to transition from this recording to the next section. So, Mr. Hornick and/or Ms. Benedicto, please give us a thumbs up to proceed when we are ready, and then Mr. Frisch will be leading us in the next section. Ms. Benedicto, just give us a go-ahead when he should start. Thank you.
We're good to begin.
All right. Thank you, everyone. This is the first work session that I have been the meeting manager of, same with Laura Jane Cohen, so we're excited to be here. Today, we'll be talking about the Social Studies and Anti-Racism Curriculum Report, which is slated for two hours, and we're about an hour over schedule, so please keep that in mind, and then the TJ Admissions Review. These documents can be found in Board Docs. I ask that staff be mindful of our time crunch when answering questions, and that members are also obviously aware of the time. It's also important to remember that members speak only when they are recognized, so please use the Raise Hands feature to be recognized. You do not need to raise your hand, though, for points of order, points of parliamentary procedure, or points of personal privilege. They're privileged motions, so you can interrupt the Board's business at any time. All other issues must be raised when a member is recognized, though, so they may not interrupt the Board's business. With that, I will turn it over to staff for the presentation regarding Social Studies and Anti-Racist Curriculum.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frisch. I am just excited to bring this presentation to you. We've talked for multiple years through multiple boards about equity. I kicked off our Leadership Conference this year about putting equity, equity at the center of all that we do, and this Board has asked this administration to really move forward with an equity lens and put it at the center of all that we do, including our curriculum. So, we have a lot to share around how we have worked to really advance our curriculum with an anti-racist and anti-biased lens, and Dr. Ivy will share some remarks and introduce you to our amazing team. Dr. Ivy?
Thank you, Dr. Brayburn, and good afternoon, Mr. Frisch and Ms. Cohen and members of the Board. We are pleased to present to you today our update on anti-racism and anti-bias curriculum in response to the two forum topic requests by this Board, which specifically asked for a review of how anti-racism and anti-bias is infused into our core curriculum, and how will we eliminate racism and implicit bias in FCPS. This presentation is a cross-department, office collaborative effort, which included members of the Instructional Services Department, the Office of Professional Learning, and Family Engagement, which includes the Office of Equity and Cultural responsiveness, and the Department of Special Services. We know that FCPS is a great system for some kids and not a great system for all students, and that we can no longer be a world-class school system until we become a responsive system, where all students, families, and staff feel seen, valued, and respected. In the midst of this pandemic and planning for the school year, it has become evident more than ever the need to not only have difficult conversations about racism, hate, and bias, but to also plan and take action. Reviewing and revising our curriculum is just one step in a multifaceted approach. We have spent time listening to our students and families and school community and know that this work not only matters to them, but is critical to our mission in maintaining a caring culture that is welcoming and inclusive, and that keeps equity at the center for all that we do. We're very thankful for this Board and your desire to support us in this work, and we look forward to sharing not only the hard work we have begun, but our plans moving forward. In addition to today's presentation, we will be sharing more of our equity updates in an in-depth work session in October. We thank you for your time, and we look forward to your questions and your dialogue, and I'm now pleased to turn the presentation over to Dr. Presidio, who will introduce the team and get us started.
All right. Thank you very much for that introduction of this really important work, Dr. Ivy. I'm also very excited to have the opportunity for our team to share all the great work that they're leading around anti-racism and anti-bias education. And just as a reminder, this work session was originally scheduled to occur back in July, but we did have to reschedule it due to the need for Board meeting time on reopening of school planning. So, we're very excited to have the opportunity to share the work today. Our main presenters, and if our Board clerks could actually give these folks presenter status, that would be great. Our main presenters today are going to be Colleen Eddy, who's our FCPS Social Studies Coordinator, along with Dr. Deborah March, who is our FCPS Cultural responsiveness curriculum specialist, and then Leona Smith, who's our Director of Equity and Family Engagement. And I do also want to acknowledge and thank Ms. Cohen and Mr. Frisch, who is the meeting managers, really provided a lot of guidance and assistance as we prepared for the work session today. So, if we could go ahead and bring up the slides again, and we'll go to Slide 2 in the presentation when we get those back up, and you'll be able to see there that that is the outline of our work session, showing the main topics that we're going to be addressing today. So, we're going to begin with a brief review of the context for the work session based on community and Board requests to have a public discussion on the anti-bias and anti-racism work that's underway in our school division. We're also going to share some draft goals that we've developed for your consideration around anti-bias and anti-racism education, and we're going to review, most of the time in the work session will be spent on reviewing the curriculum revision work and professional development work that's already been started or that is currently underway. And then finally, and very importantly, we're going to share a recommendation for the Board to consider the adoption of an explicit anti-bias and anti-racism policy. So, if we could go to Slide 3. So, just as a reminder, we wanted just to note that a lot of today's work session is really a response to a forum topic that was brought by Ms. Corbett Sanders back in January, which called on FCPS to develop plans to expand anti-bias education into the core curriculum. And we'll go to Slide 4. And also, just as a reminder, today's work session also connects back to a forum sponsored by Ms. Cohen back in June, which called for not only curriculum revision, but also a system-wide commitment to anti-racist and anti-bias education. So, with the context really in mind here, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Leona Smith, to help situate the curriculum work that we're going to spend most of our time on today into the larger context of the work that our division is doing around equity and our emerging equity plan. Leona, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio. Good afternoon, everyone. So, I know often the public, and we all might be sitting here thinking, how do we know that there is a need for anti-bias and anti-hate curriculum? And I think this statement says it all. We must listen to and have faith in the stories of our school community. Following the murder of George Floyd, and in the midst of the pandemic, and even prior to the pandemic, we have heard from all types of families telling us their stories, and we need to listen. Whether it was in town halls, personal narratives, letters, petitions, social media requests, our families have shared their truth with us. We know that we are an amazing system. It's why I get up every day. I'm so full of hope of this work, but we know there are many children and families that are not feeling seen and heard. We've heard stories about discrimination, derogatory language, racial slurs between students, microaggressions in the classroom, microaggressions towards adults and staff members. You've heard about anti-Semitic jokes and visuals being placed around. We know that we have families and students who feel unseen and heard based off ability, gender identity, and more. And we know that we have heard of stories of lowered expectations for some of our community, and FCPS, that can be no more. We know that this work is not in a vacuum, and that this is a one-pronged approach, and in a moment, I'll share a connection to our overall approach to equity, and today, we're going to focus particularly in curriculum. But we know in FCPS, all students deserve to feel safe and valued and respected. We need to say to our children, I see you. I stand with you. I hear you. And so, this is an action towards that step. This is about our caring culture and keeping this, and starting with our and starting with our curriculum as one action step. In addition to those stories, we do have data. We know that data matters as well. And so we have looked at our data from the Fairfax County Youth Survey, most recently in 2019. Nearly half of our students, almost 47% of our students, reported that they have heard or something have had something bad said to them about their race or their culture. And I want to clarify, when we talk about culture, it is any way in which a student identifies with any group. Culture is not just about ethnicity and race. It's about any group you identify with. We also look at the data around us through our partners, the Fairfax Government. Through the Fairfax County Bias and Crimes Incident, there's a report from 2013 to 17 that says the most prevalent bias type or category represented in their collection of data was against anti-black, representing 33.5% of the aggregate total. And even that calling it bias crimes, I would wager to say that sometimes it might have even been hate crimes. We also know that there are other prevailing categories, such as incidents against anti-Jewish, anti-Islam. Each of those also accounting for 10.9% of the aggregate total. We know that our community is a vibrant community. But we also know that it exists where racism still exists, bias continues to live, and we have a responsibility to start here in FCPS. So given that, we're excited that Virginia Department of Education isn't aligned in our thinking. Recently, they have unveiled their equity framework for all schools to consider. I'm really excited about this work, and I think this graphic says it all. When you look at equity and you think about centering equity, equity is at the heart of what we do. It's no longer a lens, because a lens can be taken off. A lens, you can make a decision whether you're thinking about equity. But when it's truly at the center of your heart, it's in all that we do. And wrapped around it is our families and how we engage them and how we support the social emotional needs, all of which is encompassed in our core mission is to creating global citizens that are ready to approach the world through rigorous academics. These things are all connected. They presented to us, and this aligns to our work, that when you approach equity, you approach it in five different facets. You think about compassionate student and family engagement. You consider efforts to become culturally responsive. You dig deep into your courageous leadership. You spend time reframing your curriculum, and you engage in continuous reflection. Today, we're going to spend the bulk of our time on curricular reframing. Please know that we are well aware that these other five things must happen, and these things don't happen in isolation. I would wager to say you need all five of these things in anything you do, but we are going to kind of zero in today on curriculum reframing. As we engage in this conversation, we thought it would be helpful to have some terms that we are all familiar with. So we've lifted this out for your review for our board and our public to know that our FCPS staff hasn't been engaging in these conversations and professional development for a few years. And recently, we took the time to really unpack and define the terms bias and racism. When we think about bias, we talk about two types of bias. There's that implicit bias where you unconsciously have attitudes and stereotypes that affect your understanding, shows up in your actions and your beliefs and decisions. And bias can be more than race. It can be about gender, ability, ageism, sexism, you name it. We all have bias. We are born, we are not born with bias, but bias happens quickly in our brains. It's how we make shortcuts. What's also prevalent is explicit bias. When you have a conscious attitude or belief, it often results in some deliberate thought or action. We must be accountable to both types of bias, and they lead to other types of systematic issues. We also have taken the time to define racism. Individual racism is that prejudgment, that bias or discrimination by an individual based off their ideas that there is racial inferiority of one group or of another. It may be conscious or unconsciously held. It includes both privately held beliefs, conscious and unconscious, external behaviors and actions. And then there's institutional racism. That occurs within institutions, organizations, such as ours and schools, that adopt to maintain policies and practices and procedures that are often unintentionally producing inequitable outcomes for people of color and advantage of those of white people. When we think about these terms, what we know happens when bias exists, we begin to create systems of oppression. And we must take our time to dismantle these systems of oppression. Bias doesn't happen alone. What happens is we begin to discriminate based off racism or sexism or ableism or classism. Or I even have more. The list goes on and on, and ableism and homophobia and cisism and antisemitism and Islamophobic and xenophobic and ageism. And it goes on and on. But all the isms are always present. And until we have conversations, both as adults, and begin to find developmentally appropriate ways with our students, these isms will show up in our systems of oppression. They'll show up in our rules. They'll show up in our policies unintentionally. They'll show up in our procedures, our practices, even our curriculum, which is what we're here to talk about today. And they show up in the customs and the traditions that we hold true, that this is how we do things in FCPS. So we are excited today to share with you our thoughts around how we want to approach this from the curriculum place and know that there's many other places we plan to do this work. I'm going to now turn it over to Colleen Eddy.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm the coordinator for Social Studies, and I'm glad to share with you some goals for anti-racism and anti-biased education developed in response to the January forum topic. And these are goals that were developed with cross-departmental dialogue, grounded in our work with teachers and students. At the top, you'll see goals that are focused on learning outcomes for students, expectations for students to examine bias in history and themselves and in their world, to reject racism, hate, and prejudice, to recognize injustice in systems and institutions, and to take action to improve their local, global, and digital communities, which of course has a special place in my heart as Social Studies Coordinator. We want to provide curriculum that supports those learning outcomes, curriculum that represents diverse perspectives with nuance and respect. We want curriculum that exposes students to the history and effects of racism, prejudice, and discrimination. Curriculum that increases self-awareness and affords opportunities to take that meaningful action to improve their community and the world. Aligned with those expectations for students, we know we need learning outcomes and expectations for staff, for the adults who lead the learning. So we want to empower and expect all staff to demonstrate cultural competence, to create classroom and school environments that are inclusive and safe, to activate student voice and foster empathy, to challenge racism, bias, and exclusion, and to respond to acts of hate and discrimination with appropriate action. And our staff need learning to support those actions, those expectations. So we seek to provide professional learning that examines racism and bias and history in ourselves and in our world. We seek to provide professional learning that recognizes injustice in systems and institutions. And we want to facilitate the kind of empowering and inclusive anti-bias and anti-hate learning experiences that we hope to see in our classrooms. This diagram offers a perspective on the kind of multifaceted nature of anti-racism and anti-biased curriculum. And we're going to talk about each of these aspects as we go on with a particular focus on social studies and how the change, what the change looks like underway. But you'll notice here at the center of the diagram is an ask for a school board policy on anti-racism and anti-biased education to support the kind of learning that we know we want in our classrooms and to make those expectations that we just described on the previous slides really clear. Why do we need a school board policy on anti-racism and anti-biased education? Well, we know from working with educators across FCPS that there really is a need for such clarity. Currently, our teachers and staff don't necessarily feel supported to enact this change, and that actually stems from existing policy and regulation, the Controversial Issues Regulation, that tells teachers to remain impartial on issues with substantial differences of opinion on the local, national, or international level when they're accompanied by intense feelings and strong emotions. And we know that ultimately, anti-racism and anti-biased education asks for teachers to take a clear stand, a stand against racism, a stand against bias on issues that some people may perceive as controversial. And when we come down to it, we know that changing attitudes, challenging inequality, and raising consciousness are not neutral matters. And so this ask for a school board request would really provide some clarity of expectations for our staff and some support for this work moving ahead. I offer today, we offer today some guiding documents on anti-biased education. Might support the development of such a policy. The work of Teaching Tolerance, which began in 1991, offers a host of resources to us for anti-biased education. The one that's featured on this particular slide is called "The Social Justice Standard: The Teaching Tolerance Anti-Biased Framework." And this is really relevant to being clear and transparent about the intended learning outcomes of anti-biased education. They're focused on four domains of anti-biased education: identity, diversity, justice, and action. And you can see how those align with the goals that we shared earlier for anti-racism and anti-biased education. Ultimately, Teaching Tolerance pursues prejudice reduction and collective action. And based on their alignment of their goals with ours, we recommend this guiding document for consideration by the board. In addition, Teaching Tolerance offers a guiding document on the broader practices of anti-biased education beyond learning outcome. And this does a really great job of connecting culturally responsive pedagogy, culturally responsive teaching with anti-biased education, the broader practices in the school that can support those intended learning outcomes. So while a school board policy might be needed to advance this work further, I'm really excited to share with you the work that is underway in multiple content areas, but with a particular focus on social studies. We know that the school board has supported this idea of equity at the center of education for some time. And beginning in 2018, Social Studies really named this need to transform our practices. We recognize the implicit bias in the curriculum. We recognize the need for transformation, and we committed to it. So we do have some past work to share and some present work to share as well. The board recognized the need for equity-focused positions, including one particular position that is near and dear to my heart, and that was the Multicultural Studies Curriculum Resource Teacher. And that position was filled by Dr. Deborah March, who's here with us today. She's now been recently promoted to the Specialist for Culturally Responsive Pedagogy. She's an amazing asset to FCPS and including this work of anti-racism and anti-bias. And she's going to be talking about what we see at the top of this diagram at first, where it says Design Principles and Tools. Dr. March has been instrumental in helping us clarify the design principles for cultural responsiveness and for what that looks like in a classroom. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. March.
Thank you, Ms. Eddy. So what you see on your screen is a tool that we call "The Design Principles for Cultural responsiveness." This is a tool we developed in FCPS through a collaborative learning process across teams and offices back in 2018. And the purpose of this tool was to guide transformation in curriculum and instruction across all content areas, not just social studies, for elementary, middle, and high school students. The big idea here in this tool is that what and how we teach directly impacts how students feel about themselves as learners and as human beings. And that we educators can leverage these five design principles in the center: multiple perspectives, critical lens, relevance, rigor, and relationships, to make sure that we're in the green zone on the right, where students feel affirmed in their identities and empowered as learners. A copy of this document is publicly accessible. I realize that the print may be small, but I did want to zoom in on some of the key questions that educators who use this tool could reflect on as they design learning experiences for their students. So in the multiple perspectives domain at the top, and this domain really is about, you know, this question of whose lives, experiences, contributions are deemed worthy of study in the classroom. Educators using this row would be asking questions such as, are diverse experiences and perspectives represented with respect and nuance in my curriculum, in my learning experience, in my assessment? And those perspectives include students' perspective. Notice that third question on the right. Are students invited to use their voice and activate their own perspective? I wanted to call attention as well to the critical lens domain. And here in the second row, this is really about giving kids opportunities, giving students opportunities to think for themselves about the materials they're learning instead of passively accepting things the way that they are. And so some reflective questions on the right include, you know, are students encouraged to examine materials, events, and institutions critically, attending to power, position, and bias? Will students understand human systems as the product of choices that can be made better? And of course, will students construct their own understanding about enduring concepts? There are many reflective questions here across these five domains, and you'll be hearing connections to these design principles in some of the curriculum work underway within and beyond social studies in this presentation. And so this slide describes some of the places across the curriculum, across subject areas, where you can see these design principles in action currently and work underway. So you'll notice in Language Arts, the equity audits of bookrooms, looking at, you know, which, whose perspectives, experiences are represented in our texts? Is there a representative diversity of authors in the text that our students have access to? Likewise, the Critical Literacy Unit and the Elementary Planning and Pacing Guides, supported with professional learning for teachers. And of course, the design principles on that prior slide are prioritized in the curriculum documents being created for the return-to-school resources for teachers currently. In Health and Physical Education, our family life education learning experiences on identity and stereotypes support students in building this understanding, as well as the anti-biased connections in middle and high school learning experiences that are offered to schools through the return-to-school curriculum. And also in Digital Citizenship, the lessons on online hate speech, gender stereotypes, and confirmation bias all enact these design principles. But today, we're going to focus more specifically on social studies. And this slide really offers a kind of bird's eye view, an overview of work that we're going to dig more deeply into with some concrete examples in a moment. So the work underway in social studies really falls under these four big headings. The first one being looking at what we have currently, auditing existing resources that we have centrally in our curriculum repository for bias, using the tool you just saw, as well as other tools, to assess the extent to which our learning experiences are culturally responsive. And we've been removing harmful resources, you know, since we've been using this tool in 2018. But it's to eradicating harm. It's been important to us to also create learning experiences that are transformative, not enough just to delete and remove, but also to create. And that's what these other three bullet points speak to. You'll notice the Developing Partnerships bullet point. This talks about really our work with museum partners, universities, and other community partners to scale curriculum development focused on inquiry-based learning. And you'll hear a bit more about that in the concrete examples. We're infusing anti-biased standards into the core curriculum guidance currently being offered to schools for distance learning experiences and return to school. And finally, we're providing professional learning, professional development for social studies educators to ensure that they have the support and the tools that they need to enact these shifts. And so I'd like to, we'd like to present to you one concrete example of that professional learning that began last year. This Rethinking Virginia Studies was a system-wide professional learning opportunity in which two teachers from every elementary school attended a three-phase learning cohort, really a massive investment in professional learning to support teachers in enacting meaningful learning experiences. We decided that Virginia Studies, which is our fourth-grade social studies course, was a really important place to start with this transformative work. This is the first U.S. History Survey course that our students in FCPS access. So this is the first time that students are building their understanding of an overarching story of our state's past and present, and really our nation's past and present. Unfortunately, the story told by state standards was superficial. It focused on the experiences and contributions of a select few, and it erased or misrepresented the experiences and contributions of many people, specifically of people of color. And so, you know, this curriculum, this narrow curriculum, resulted in instructional practices that lacked historical integrity, such as Colonial Day, which was a day of experiential learning, dress-up, and celebration that was formerly held at many FCPS elementary schools. We knew that to enact systemic change, teachers deserved an opportunity to deepen their content knowledge about U.S. history, about culturally responsive teaching, and to work alongside one another and alongside us in Central Office to rethink the way we teach Virginia Studies. And this meant first, a day of site-based learning. And that's what you're seeing in these images. Teachers joining us at museum sites. You'll see on the upper left, the National Museum of the American Indian. The photos on the right are actually at one of, it's Luther Jackson Middle School right here in FCPS to learn from the Alumni Association and guest speakers about the history of segregated education right here in Fairfax County Public Schools. So this first day of site-based learning was really an opportunity to deepen our understanding of history, including stories that often get marginalized or untold. And this resulted as well in a day of design, when teachers reflected on what they learned, thought about their students, and worked together to design new learning experiences, reflecting the design principles. reflecting the design principles of cultural responsiveness and what they learned about our past and present. And then, of course, in March, so these days I should have said our Day of Site-Based Learning was October 2019, when these cohorts came together. Then again, in November, they came together to apply what they learned, to design a change. And then they went back to their school sites and tried those ideas out with students, enacted those culturally responsive learning experiences. And then in March, we all came back together in our cohorts and reflected, learned about what the teachers had done. They shared exhibitions of learning. Two of our five cohorts were able to do it in person, and then three of our five cohorts shared their learning digitally after school closures related to coronavirus. And we do have a video that shows a little bit about what teachers learned, experienced, and the change that impacted their students in March. And so I believe that we're going to have time to show that, but I'll pause here and let it get set up.
If you like, I do have the file downloaded on my computer here rather than from the drives. I can go ahead and share.
Deb, how would you like to do that? Would you like them to share?
She has it. I have it just, the link from the drive.
Okay. Go ahead and share it. Thank you. It's all right. This will be the first time I can think of that we've shared a video remotely like this before.
We have been in a social studies collaboration all year. We've met three times with other fourth-grade teachers to actually look at social studies in a different perspective, you know, whose story is not being told, and how can we better address the inequity that's being taught in social studies?
For so long, it's been all about maybe covering the standards, and we're rethinking the way we teach it to make it more relevant to kids and to help them think about marginalized groups that are not necessarily represented in some of our standards.
We don't talk about the people who did the work, and we're certainly undervalued if their stories are not told in the manner in which it should.
I think it's so important to like unlock their stories in the best of our ability, or at least to let our students know that there are stories out there that are missing right now, and that we can try to be set together through primary sources, artifacts.
Today, we just brought back some of the activities that we've done with our students already, and we're doing a gallery walk to look at all of the different examples. And it has opened up my eyes a lot more, and it's definitely given me some material that I want to put, like do within my own classroom for the rest of this year or beginning of next year.
Almost every exhibit has things from different perspectives. Every exhibit has more student-oriented learning versus teacher-led learning. So the students are the ones that are doing the research and doing the collaborating and coming to their own conclusions. We have found that most of our social studies textbooks are only told from one perspective, and many, many students' backgrounds are being left out.
We have the control to make our lessons more engaging for the kids and to bring in all of these hidden stories.
The minute that you let the children talk and hear their ideas and hear the other students respond, you would actually be amazed at their insights and their deep thinking. And once you've engaged them in the deep thinking, they notice the problems and they want to come up with solutions.
For my students, I've seen a lot more independence and a lot more standing up, not only for themselves, but for others. And I see a lot of empathy. I don't have to be the lead on every discussion that we have. I can let it flow with them, and that's okay. But I think with me teaching this, and they see an identity in themselves, which is amazing for them to take it and run with it in the real world. I'm excited.
Thank you so much. I'm glad we were able to figure out how to share that. You may have noticed all five of the Design Principles for Cultural responsiveness in play in that video, and I think there's much to celebrate in the teachers' accomplishments. But the thing that always comes through for me is the high expectations for, you know, students' ability to navigate the complexity of our past and present, and also a high degree of faith in their ability to make a meaningful contribution to our communities and world right now. The model of change that is evident here in Rethinking Virginia Studies in this cohort really exemplifies an approach that we in FCPS Social Studies have found successful, starting with inquiry-based learning for teachers, in which they enact and reflect on a change in their classrooms, and then learn from one another, and really think within and beyond the unit that they're enacting that change in order to grow as culturally responsive educators. And so now I will turn it back over to K-12 Social Studies Coordinator Colleen Eddy, who will share about another initiative for change underway.
Thanks so much, Deborah. In addition to the division work that we've done within FCPS focused on fourth-grade social studies, I'm really excited to share a larger collaboration that's focused on all of our U.S. history courses. This is a collaboration across six school divisions in Virginia who are working to scale change, knowing that the standards of learning provide an incomplete picture of history and an incomplete social studies education. We have come together with these school divisions that you can see depicted here on the slide: Albemarle, who's been leading a lot of this work, Virginia Beach City Public Schools, Charlottesville City, Powhatan County, and also, oh my gosh, I'm drawing a blank, Madison County, sorry, who have joined us in collaborative work. So over two years, we have worked with over 100 educators, 30 partners from historical sites, institutions, and museums, I'll share a little bit about that in a moment, to design inquiry-based learning units that focus on source analysis, argumentation, and an invitation to informed action to improve our world. We've designed close to 40 inquiry units over the last two years, and we are excited to pilot and revise those so that we can begin to scale this work in FCPS. This coming year, we'll be focusing on our High School World History courses in the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative. We'll be working alongside Facing History and Ourselves to do a critical look at the history of education, and then begin to explore how we can provide inquiry-based learning in our World History courses. Here you see represented some of the institutions that have joined us in this large-scale work across Virginia. We had experts from these institutions embedded in design groups with teachers, so that we were designing units that were focused on content expertise and inquiry-driven. And it's exciting to share that the Virginia Department of Education has helped to support this work through a grant to publish these units when they're complete on Go Open Virginia to help scale the work across the state. So we've received not only attention from a variety of media outlets, but from the BDOE, who is looking to adopt potentially the inquiry design model for assessment reform and for reform of the curriculum standards. This is really exciting and powerful work of which we are very proud. I want to zoom back into the work in Fairfax to kind of set a foundation for this. Our teachers need really in-depth opportunities to explore those Design Principles for Cultural responsiveness that Dr. March shared with us, and they need help with implicit bias training. So last school year, we spent multiple days with middle school and high school social studies chairs to help prepare them to lead this work at the school level, to enact change in the classroom, to kind of be the lead learner in this process of change. And we also led professional development system-wide for all middle school and high school social studies teachers at our division-wide, our county-wide in services in the winter of last year and also in the summer, both of which explicitly focused on cultural responsiveness, and the summer, explicit focus on anti-bias and anti-racism. I'd like to share a little bit about the curriculum development processes beyond these inquiry-based units that we discussed earlier. We have undertaken over two years with over 50 teachers, an audit of the courses you see listed there on the left, Virginia Studies, U.S. history courses, World History courses, Civics, using those Design Principles of Cultural responsiveness. And we identified implicit bias in a significant portion of our curriculum resources in our central repository, and we're removing over a third of those resources as a result of that audit conducted by a diverse team of teachers. In addition, we are making new curriculum to support comprehensive change. In the past school year, we did a major overhaul of the Virginia Studies Planning and Pacing Guides. To give you a sense of this work, the Civil War unit alone is 60 pages long, so this is really time-intensive work to overhaul the pacing guides through and through. We also worked with the Smithsonian Learning Lab this summer on a multi-course effort, so all of our U.S. history courses were represented with teachers from across the division, who paired up with the Smithsonian Learning Lab to curate sources for more diverse representation of individuals, groups, and identities in our U.S. history courses, and paired those with thinking routines to ensure that thinking, critical thinking, is at the heart of the learning process. And finally, we've built more robust resources for our elective course Combating Intolerance, an amazing course that's currently offered in nine schools. We felt we needed to provide a more robust curriculum to help advance that elective course across the division. Most recently, as we prepare for the return to school, the ask across content areas was to identify essential standards or high-priority standards to help hone our attention to our greatest priorities in the return to school in this unprecedented time. While doing that work, we took the direction of the school board to begin infusing the aims of anti-bias education into the core curriculum, and began pairing the social justice standards that we discussed earlier with those essential standards grounded in the work of the Virginia Department of Education, grounded in the state's standards. So in that return-to-school curriculum, we really prioritize relevance, critical thinking, informed action. We've got clear unit concepts and essential questions, as well as performance assessments that really promote critical thinking, application of skills, argumentation, to go beyond kind of that idea of, you know, inculcating a narrative in students and asking them to repeat that back on standardized tests. We are really focusing on critical thinking. Here is an example. I don't want to get too far into the weeds. I know we're a little in the weeds already. But this is an example from our high school U.S. history curriculum. At the top, you'll see an example that ties the state standard around the Civil War and Reconstruction era with an emphasis on connections to students' identities, communities, and the world, the relevance piece. And underneath that, you see two standards that come from the Teaching Tolerance Anti-Bias Education Framework. One, that invites students to see unfairness at the individual level and injustice at the institutional or systemic level, and in addition, invites students to express empathy when people are excluded or mistreated because of their identities. So this is an example of how anti-bias aims are being infused into the core curriculum. Connected to that, of course, we've designed learning experiences, so not just stating the learning outcomes, but for the return-to-school curriculum, we're providing streamlined curriculum sources. Here's one example of how students might be assessed on that Civil War unit. The goal is at the top: Students construct an argument that addresses the compelling question using specific claims and relevant evidence from sources while acknowledging competing views. And here are examples of essential questions. How do the U.S. Civil War and Reconstruction impact our national identity and unity today? And how does the past impact present understanding, systems, and actions regarding prejudice and social bias? So this is just one example of how bringing in that focus on critical thinking pair with anti-bias education is so important. So we have next steps, so that is a lot of work that has happened already, and that is soon to take hold. But we have additional next steps that we'd love to share. We are moving forward with system-wide professional development for teachers of U.S. history courses. We are working to help teachers adopt the use of those inquiry design model units that we're going to pilot this school year, revise, and then scale in the coming year. We are going to initiate a focus on World History with the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative, and we're going to create clear expectations and guidance around Holocaust education in grades seven, 10, and 11, so that teachers, students, and our community recognize the necessity of Holocaust education. We are adopting the new High School elective for American Studies. It's going to course review in the coming weeks, and that is a course that is currently under creation by the Virginia Department of Education. And we should receive the actual curriculum sometime this winter or spring, but we're moving forward with adopting it. And we're also providing really strong professional development to teachers this spring through a course that Dr. March is working with a variety of teachers to develop. We are advocating for, seeking for, support and funding for site-based learning for students at the National Museum of the American Indian, National Museum of African-American History and Culture, and the U.S. Holocaust Museum. These amazing treasures are basically in our backyard, and it would be so impactful to ensure that all students have the opportunity for such site-based learning. And lastly, I want to share our passion for facilitating input on the new iteration of the Virginia Department of Education Standards of Learning. They are scheduled to be published in 2022, and in the meantime, there's a public engagement process. We want to make sure that FCPS, our very diverse and vibrant community, has a voice in that process so that we see different standards the next time around, so that we don't have to do as much retrofitting to accomplish anti-bias education. We're eager to do that. Beyond social studies, which of course is my love, but beyond social studies, we know we need to expand and deepen efforts across all content areas. That work is underway, but we are working to hone a clear vision for this work to unfold in all content areas. Anti-bias education is not a subject exclusive to social studies. And to that end, we'd like to explore the development of topical anti-bias lessons. We know that particular topics like race, religion, ability, class, immigration, gender, and sexuality deserve attention, that bias like racism, ableism, homophobia, cissexism, sexism, and more deserve nuanced attention, and topical lessons would give us the ability to support teachers in enacting such lessons. We know that we may need board support, explicit board support, for such lessons, and we look forward to discussing that. So we have certainly covered a lot. I just want to emphasize again that anti-bias education is not one thing. Anti-bias education is multifaceted, and there are key topics, and there is work ahead of us that we look to look forward to discussing with the board. Leona is going to come back and share some additional next steps to support change across FCPS. Thanks so much for letting me share the work underway.
Thank you, Colleen, and I'm mindful of the time, so I'll try to get through this in a quick manner. So we heard a lot about that curriculum reframing, and we think about the five Cs of equity in Virginia. We know that this work is more than just curriculum. It's about that internal work that teachers must do to be culturally responsive. All teaching is culture-responsive, but the question is to who? And so we know that we must work with our teachers to create that paradigm shift.
And topical lessons would give us the ability to support teachers in enacting such lessons. We know that we may need board support, explicit board support for such lessons, and we look forward to discussing that. So we have certainly covered a lot. I just want to emphasize again that anti-bias education is not one thing. Anti-bias education is multifaceted, and there are key topics. And there is work ahead of us that we look to look forward to discussing with the board. Leona is going to come back and share some additional next steps to support change across FCPS. Thanks so much for letting me share the work underway.
Thank you, Colleen, and I'm mindful of the time, so I'll try to get through this in a quick manner. So we heard a lot about that curriculum reframing. And we think about the five Cs of Equity, Virginia. We know that this work is more than just curriculum. It's about that internal work that teachers must do to be culturally responsive. All teaching is culture-responsive, but the question is to who? And so we know that we must work with our teachers to create that paradigm shift internally. We have to listen and learn from our students and think about their cultures that they identify with, whether it's race and gender, ability, how are we considering factors such as neurodiversity? How are we thinking about how we engage in our classrooms? So teachers must engage in both that cognitive shift and that behavioral shift in the resources they choose in addition to a curriculum. So this is just a snapshot of some of the professional development that has been offered just recently. We had our Equity Symposium, and much of the board was there, so thank you for your support, and which we did a Beyond Words, a call to action, over 60 presentations, over 1,300 participants. Recently, our instructional staff, in support of returning to school, engaged in social-emotional modules connected to the Castle Framework, which also have direct ties to exploring empathy and identity and culture-responsive and being aware of others. Right now, we are wrapping up Culture Response Miss Module Six. This is a continuation of our yearly professional development provided to all FCPS staff. And we are just in the time of wrapping that up, where all staff was understanding what bias and hate and responding to racism is. We know that our athletic coaches do spend time with students, and so they are not contractual employees. So they sometimes miss this professional development. So we're going to spend some time also working with them to understand bias and racism so that when these conversations and things happen, even outside of our classrooms, we all have common language and expectations to prepare. And then in March, we'll do our second module this year, thinking about culture responsiveness again and going deeper into addressing racism and bias and hate and all those different things we spoke about. Because again, as we've shared, that not only is it about the curriculum, it's about the choices teachers make. Teachers are members of culture-responsive professional development communities. They have to explore and assess their own knowledge about diversity in the community they serve. They must recognize their assumptions that they're making, and they must become more informed. And professional development helps them do that. This is about the resources they pool, whose voices are heard or not heard in the classroom. We know that this also impacts our discipline. You heard us share earlier this summer, along with Carrie Williams, about our reform, students' rights responsibility. And we know part of that work is quality and relevant and engaging curriculum and engaging teaching in the classroom will result in less discipline. So this work is all blended together. We must do this work together, and we have spent time in additional modules thinking about this. And then finally, as we saw in the video, which is my favorite part of today, is elevating teacher and student voice. We have to have faith in the stories of our community. So we spent some time this summer talking with our equity leads and our leadership team members to be really clear about expectations, about the formation of equity teams, the use of equity audits at the school level, creating access and opportunity goals at the school level. We'll have ongoing professional development for our leads and our principals this year to continue these conversations. Additionally, our leadership team has engaged in some coaching practice around coaching for equitable practices. So when we see that there are situations that need to be resolved or addressed, or there's not implementation of fidelity, or someone is struggling, that our leaders have the words that they need to have these conversations. Our principals will also receive this later this year. We need to elevate our students. Our town halls have taught us that our community has things to share. So we need to continue our community town halls, including student town halls. And I'm really excited to share about our Student Ambassador Leadership Program. These are student equity leaders at every high school, two per high school. So we want these two students to be a member of those equity teams, be actively engaged. We will also provide them professional learning to give them the tools and the words and the voice to be able to be an active member in these teams and support their schools and push their students. That's where we will see this work really transform that paradigm shift, when we allow our kids to lead us. We know there are many student club connections going across FCPS. We have the Anti-Defamation League, No Place for Hate in some of our schools, Kids for Peace in some of our schools, Student Associations in some of our schools, such as Black Student Association, pride groups. And we know that we need to expand those opportunities and provide more information to equity leads and student ambassadors about how do you ensure that the voices of your school community are being heard? So this is just a snapshot of that work, knowing that we're going to share more about those five Cs in October with you. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Presidio to wrap us up.
All right. Thank you so much, Leona. And we're going to go into board discussion here in just a second, but we have covered a lot of ground. So we did kind of wanted to wrap up, calling your attention to a few different recommendations that we would have for the board. And the first, of course, is that idea of putting in place an explicit policy that would reject all forms of racism and support anti-bias and anti-racist education. And that's really important, as Colleen discussed, because our current regulations ask staff to maintain an impartial stance on controversial issues. So we think that explicit policy is really important. Second, we are recommending that the board support the continuation of our curriculum revision work. And importantly, we would ask for the board's financial support as we continue to do that work as well. You heard from Dr. March, who's doing some amazing leadership work. But of course, that's one person in one position. And we could certainly benefit from more staffing, as well as additional funds to support some of the activities we described, such as the site-based learning. It's some field trip experiences that we could take advantage of here in our local community. Third, we are also recommending that the board would support the infusion of anti-bias education standards into additional content areas. So Colleen talked about that work and what that looks like. And with your support and encouragement, we hope to continue that work. And then finally, we're seeking board support for the inclusion of required lessons around anti-bias to ensure that all of our students would have the opportunity to receive those types of educational experiences. And we think that that's really, really important. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Mr. Frisch to help us facilitate board questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank all of our staff for helping us with that presentation. I apologize in advance if anybody hears any weird sound of my partner's choir director, and they're doing vocal warm-ups in the other room, which is now his classroom, our living room. Anyways, Bev, can you confirm that you're keeping time for us today?
I can confirm that.
Okay, good. Laura Jane and I were wondering, just wanted to make sure. And we can get started. First up, we have a very eager Ms. Corbett Sanders, who got her hand up right when the presentation was beginning. So well done. The floor is yours, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Well, thank you, Mr. Frisch. Yes, I am very eager, since I was the maker of the motion for the forum topic that initiated this. This is something that I have been eagerly awaiting, and I'm just thrilled. I want to first thank our staff. I think they are more eager than I am. And so I just commend you on your energy and your focus on this area. I wanted to just kind of go through some of the comments of the ask. Obviously, I fully support a policy on anti-racism and anti-bias. I would just urge that as we look at doing such a policy, which would go to the Governance Committee, that we look at it in the context of One Fairfax and not just restrict our anti-bias, anti-racism policy to curriculum, but broader to how we treat our students vis-à-vis the SRNR, as well as in our staffing. So I think that it would tie in nicely with our existing non-discrimination policy. I think it would tie in nicely with One Fairfax, and it would tie in nicely with many of the improvements we've done with the SRNR in the past few years. I also want to commend staff for their reliance on primary resources and taking advantage of the resources in the greater D.C. area. I do support our focusing on returning to a field trip experience for our students. I think that is critical. And it's something that we peeled away with budget cuts over the years. So I think that we do need to look at our own funding, but also look at grant funding for that. I do think that the strengthening of the Combating Intolerance is something that's really important. I will disclose that my brother-in-law was the first person to teach Combating Intolerance in the Fairfax County system, and he actually went and visited with Congressman Lewis to get his insights on how to develop such a curriculum. So I think this is a good year to reinforce the work of the Combating Intolerance curriculum. Next, I do want to talk a little bit about the relationship of expanding this to other areas of our curriculum. I think that we already gave you all the go-ahead in our forum topic, both forum topics in January and again in July, on the importance of having this broader than just a social studies curriculum. And one area that I think it is very important for us to look at is the impact of bias and racism on social-emotional learning and social-emotional health. And so I would urge that we infuse this into that curriculum. I would also say that there should be mandatory lessons, as you asked, in your discussion. And I do thank you very much. I want to thank you, Colleen, for expanding to include the Holocaust Studies piece. As you know, that's something that both Ms. Blockland and I spoke to you about, so I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Sizemore Heiser.
Great. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to follow behind that. I very much support this work. I very much support having required anti-bias in our curriculum. But I wanted to bring up a few points specifically that I feel is missing. It was mentioned once about neurodiversity, but there really isn't anything else. There's a one mention of ableism. But so, for example, we've referenced the Teaching Tolerance materials. I read through all of the materials that was referenced in the slides. And both examples about disability are very much an old-fashioned example. Both of them brought students with physical disabilities. There's really no mention of neurodiversity in any of the Teaching Tolerance materials that were referenced here. So I really want to make sure we're intentional about including neurodiversity and children with developmental disabilities as part of the norm. I know early on Slide six, we talked about, you know, not just racism, but, you know, that the culture is of all of who you are. But we haven't traditionally talked about disability as part of culture and as part of diversity. So if we're going to sort of make sure that we're talking about all of who we are, we want to include disability in that conversation intentionally to make sure that our students and our teachers know to include that. I know we don't want to violate anyone's privacy rights, but we need to reframe the conversation on disability as something that's not a bad thing and something that's part of the norm. So I really, I feel that that's missing here. I also wanted to bring up, when we're looking at our relationships to their culture, again, we want to make sure we're intentional about how we define culture. And the other piece that I wanted to bring up, when we talk about African-American studies, and I know this is something coming from the state, but I would love to see classes on Women's Studies, on Latin-Lithuan Studies, as well as just a class on diversity and cultural competency that gets to all of these pieces of it as electives and not just talking about African-American studies. It's a great place to start, but I'd like to see that expanded. So if anyone could sort of talk about the intentional work around neurodiversity. And I know I've met with our equity staff, and they've been very open to the conversation. I appreciate that. But what has been done as we're moving forward in this work to embed that in here intentionally and have it be intentional part of the conversation?
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Sizemore Heiser. And I'm going to let Leona, I think she wants to respond to this as well. But I would just say, first of all, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done, and we understand that. And we really appreciate you calling attention to the special focus that we really do need to have on our special needs students. And we'd be very happy to continue to work with you and other community members to find the right ways to do this work, because, as you said, you know, we understand that the Teaching Tolerance standards are not the only framework. That's a starting point. That's one resource that's informing our work. But we certainly want to work with, you know, community experts here as well. So the work is, I would say, in its initial planning stages. And we know that we have a long way to go, not just in that area, but in some of the other areas with respect to anti-bias education as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio. I would wholeheartedly agree that, you know, we have more work to do. We've had really robust conversations with you, and we know that we need to think about this idea of neurodiversity in more intentional ways. Many of us participated in your session. It was amazing. And thinking about how potentially add that into our cohorts. One of the things that we're still working around, this idea of how we might even do our cohorts, given that we're virtual. So we're trying to be mindful around how often, you know, we're not pulling teachers away from their students, but also giving them the tools they need to be more effective. So one of the places we have considered is our cohorts. And additionally, Module Seven, when we deep into the different types of bias, is where we also plan to embed some intentional work around all the different forms of diversity and where bias impacts us all. As I think, as I shared, and I think this is where you're coming from too, when teachers sit down to plan, they need to have all these things in mind. And we know that we still have some work to do on creating robust professional learning communities where we really think about all these things. Like what tools do teachers really need? What learning needs to happen so that they really are creating, thinking about all the types of diversity in their classroom? So I look forward to continuing that conversation with you. You've been such a good supporter of us in that way and sharing your knowledge. But that's our original thinking right now, is through our cohorts, is through our work with professional learning communities, and also through our module.
And I do appreciate the great partnership and willingness to listen. I'm happy to continue that work. Absolutely. I appreciate that. I wanted just to bring one other thing up. When we're talking about systematic racism and bias, I would like us to maybe do some of the work to look at that systematic bias against students with neurodiversity in the way we've set up our programming and our class structures as well. And I think that's something just to look at as we're doing this work. I really think there's room here for our school system to be a leader in this area. And I would just encourage you to really embed that all the way across and really challenge our, as we're doing this work, to make sure that it's intentionally included in our definitions of diversity and culture and strength. So that was my last piece, and I really appreciate you guys being open to the conversation. And, you know, if you could consider the women's voices, I'd be glad to. Thank you for all your great work.
Thank you, Ms. Sizemore Heiser. Up next, we have Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I echo the sentiment shared by my colleague regarding all of this work, both of my colleagues regarding all of this work, so thank you for that. I have a few questions that I want to speak to, beginning with Slide 14. This slide talks about changing attitudes, challenging inequity, and also having the instructor not being impartial on the issues that are being presented. One of the things that we have to really be clear about is that this work really involves a reflection on our own embedded values and beliefs that are deeply seated. How are we ready? Are we ready? How have we addressed teacher behaviors? I think Ms. Smith said teacher behaviors, that paradigm shift that's also happening. But how have or how will we address teacher behaviors that are inconsistent with these expectations? Whether or not this is embedded in a policy or not?
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I guess I would just start by saying, you know, first, we've had a lot of teachers, actually, that have brought this up as an issue and a challenge to us. And they feel the need to be more active and more responsive, and they do feel a little bit hamstrung by the existing controversial issues regulation that we have in place. So we have quite a few teachers who would like to feel empowered to act more than they currently do. So in addition, you know, I think kind of getting at your question, how do we ensure that folks are ready for this and how do we respond? And that's really the professional development work that we're doing and that, you know, Leona's team is leading through the Equity Professional Development, is to ensure that our staff are ready and do understand that they have a responsibility when they see issues of bias, discrimination, racism in our system or in the classroom or in the schoolhouse, that they do take an active role in addressing those issues. So we definitely have more work to do to build our collective capacity, to build individual capacity and build collective capacity. But having the board policy not only acknowledges the urgency of that work, it also empowers those that are ready to act now to be able to do so.
Thank you for that. I also want to share that I would be in full support of the board looking into this, creating a policy to say that we are an organization that will not tolerate bias and racism. And so I'm happy to support that. In addition, I also want to be sure that I throw my support behind exploring opportunities to support some of these experiences being described, because we need to be sure that our students have those opportunities. I have a question, I think, that was embedded in Slide 18, where we talked about the curriculum impacts and the five areas. How are we evaluating success in these areas? When teams are planning, when work is being developed for instruction, how would we know when these are met? What criteria has been, I see the criteria, but what metrics have been articulated to the teachers that, yes, this is sufficient in terms of meeting these standards on Slide 18?
So that is another excellent question. I'm going to certainly invite Dr. March or Colleen Eddy to respond to that, as they're the ones working most closely with the use of this particular tool.
Go ahead, Deborah.
Thank you.
I guess I'll just by saying that this tool is intended, you know, for self-reflection first among curriculum writers as well as teachers. But I do know that we use versions of this tool centrally as a, essentially, as a tool to evaluate basal resources, learning experiences, instructional practices. And we've used this tool alongside others in our curriculum evaluation that has resulted in the deletion, the removal of harmful resources. And I also, and perhaps Ms. Smith could speak most impactfully to this piece, but this tool has currently been embedded in two division-wide practices, one being the cultural proficiency modules, informing instructional planning, and the other that it's infused in collaborative learning teams, you know, planning processes so that these critical questions about cultural responsiveness help to evaluate the practices that teachers on collaborative teams are enacting as they serve their students. I realize as I'm speaking that I'm not answering the question about concrete metrics. And so I do, I, I, I'm very interested to kind of think more about what that might look like at a systemic level. I know that Ms. Eddy might have some thoughts, but I, I would say that we try to be very intentional about creating a set of reflective questions and not a checklist to try to avoid the erroneous assumption that cultural responsiveness or anti-racism is a, you know, a concrete kind of set of things that we can check off and do one time that might lend itself to metrics that appear to signify transformation, but actually might restrict the transformative impact of our shift. So I don't know, Ms. Eddy, if you'd like to expand.
I can just share that, you know, there are a number of tools that we share with you, that we hold ourselves accountable with. And so each of these design principles, we've developed a kind of a rubric, if you will, that helps us evaluate curriculum on a scale. We know that it's not either red or green, that there are these gradations toward transformation. And so we do have those, we use them in the curriculum development process. And that's the process by which we audited and removed resources. So some of the metrics that I shared earlier around the thousands of resources that we audited and over a third that we have removed is a product of enacting this in curriculum work, which of course translates into practice into the classroom. But I also think it would be really interesting to explore how the design principles in a measurable way impact the student's classroom experience. And that is another question.
You actually touched upon what I was trying to get to in terms of what rubrics are available for staff to be able to evaluate during their own lesson planning, you know, plan-do-act cycles. Because that continuous reflection will only increase the next lesson's effectiveness in addressing these issues. So having that rule break would be essential as collaborative teams are having these discussions. Ms. Smith, I see you shaking your head. Did you want to add to that question?
Yes, I was just gonna add that I think what they shared is that great look at that micro level within our schools, right? We know that the school leader has a responsibility for that macro level. And so I don't know if you recalled when I shared this year for the first time, we've shared an expectation, all schools are engaging in something we call an equity audit. In the past, it was seen more of a reflective tool. It was invitational, it was optional. And so now schools, now that they have these equity teams, they're taking a look at where this work exists across. They're looking at things such as the learning environment, the climate of the building, opportunity, who do we have in our courses? And so every school has a responsibility to take some time. It's not a survey. It's sitting through this audit and going through section by section and reflecting and giving themselves a score and then choosing a goal of where they want to support. And one of those areas is instruction. And then that information is being shared back at the regional level. I think that you bring up a very good point. And it's a point that I know myself and our team is really aware of, that we hear from our community as well. So we've done all this great work setting the stage. We've done all this great work talking about paradigm shifts. And so now, how are we going to ensure that it's happened? So I know that we are ready as a divisions to start moving towards that next portion of accountability and measurement. And those are some of the great things we hope to share with you in October.
Okay. I did have one other question. This goes to slide 39. And this was the Virginia Studies. I would love to have a concrete example in terms of how any component of that Virginia Studies curriculum has been reimagined to include this perspective. If you could provide an example, like this is what it was before this work was applied to it, and this is what our teachers are currently doing. Kind of a comparison, if you may, if you are able to. I know I'm putting you on the spot on this one.
Well, I think I could talk to, you know, probably the most substantial contribution is disrupting a traditional practice called Colonial Day that existed for, you know, literally generations in our schools, where students were asked to dress up like people who may have enslaved or oppressed their ancestors. And so for schools where Colonial Day was still present, we asked for the change idea that they enact to be, to rethink that practice, to retire that practice, and instead focus on the design principles of culturally responsive teaching by developing inquiry-based learning experiences, experiential learning where appropriate. And so I know that, I'm, I'm trying to think. I know in one school, for example, they had planned to have students engage in a, a look at civic activism across Virginia's history. And to, they literally had like a green screen behind kids where they name on a, on a poster what they would like to advocate for in Virginia today. I mean, that's just demonstrably different than the practice of Colonial Day. And so, so that's a really, that's a really key feature and shift in that kind of experiential learning. And there are smaller examples as well, what, that are maybe feel a little bit less like a major event, but are true shifts in teaching and learning. Widespread, we saw the implementation of the use of something called thinking routines. These are research-based processes developed by Harvard's Project Zero to support thinking, because learning is a consequence of thinking. If there is no thinking, there is no learning. How do we scaffold that for students? How do we help students to think empathetically? How do we help them to think as global citizens? How do we help them to think critically and making connections from past to present? Those thinking routines have really taken hold in, in Virginia Studies courses. And we've got lots of documentation of that, a really powerful shift in a teaching and learning practice. One of the thinking routines, for example, that we work with teachers on is called main, side, and hidden, or the story routine. So what in an artifact is the main story? What is the side story? And what might be the hidden story launches students into inquiry?
Okay. And I think with my limited time, I have one question left. There's a slide, I believe it's slide 37, that speaks to, and the effort. I, I will put, I, thank you. I will stop right there. I'll say my question elsewhere.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Up next, we have Ms. Kies-Gamara.
While I turn my camera on, I'll just put me on the go-back list. Okay, I will start with recognizing that our strategic plan already talks about a caring culture. And I think that what we're talking about with respect to developing a policy is really recognizing the essence and the, the true essence of what a caring culture is. I would posit that while we have a number of people we need to include and absolutely appropriately include in addressing the kinds of things that we're talking about today, I think we also need to recognize that with respect to the surveys that I read about in today's presentation, that more than 30% of the students who provided us said that they had experienced slurs were black students. I think that we also have to recognize that we have had a summer of racial unrest, where the history of African Americans has been on display and the, and the inequities of that. And we need to recognize that. And so I'm grateful to see what we're looking at. But I also want to place a level of urgency because our students are trying to figure out how to maneuver a world where all of this has bubbled up to the top. And I think they need our help to do that. And so I'm really glad to see that this is happening. I will say, I'll start just immediately with, I see this focus on, on the fourth grade. I would really love to see how we are addressing students as they come into kindergarten and first grade. Because it is true, first impressions are lasting impressions. So I will start there. With respect to, I think one of the most important things that we have to look at is accountability and fidelity with respect to implementing what is being suggested here. I know I'm not the, probably not the only board member who has received concerns about our equity leads being able to do excellent, an excellent job. But it all depends on how our principals implement their services. And so let me stop there before, I don't want to use up all my time. How are we making sure that our equity leads are given, given the authority they need to really evoke change in their schools?
Thank you. I can share a little bit more about that. So we have also heard stories of equity leads feeling that they do not have a voice. And we know that, that really, for this work to happen, it has to be a partnership. So the equity lead initiative was new. And so we took the time this year to sort of re-center and make sure that everyone was crystal clear about the expectations. So for the first time, we kicked off the year, thankfully that you all approved that extra three weeks. We had time with our teachers. So we pulled every single equity lead and principal together to be very clear. Dr. Braybrand, Dr. Ivy, Becky Banning, all shared sort of, these are the expectations. Here's how you all work together. This is what that partnership looks like, how we need everyone to be in tandem with one another for the betterment. And then we also made it clear that if there are situations that really, that's where that conversation at that regional level is critical. So that we understand that we seek truth of the whole story so that we can enact action. So that was the first time we've done that. And we recognize and reflecting that we should have done that from day one, when this initiative was in its first inception a year or two ago, even prior to my coming on board. And so we took that time to really sit down together. And we also know that that doesn't mean it's not going to continue to happen. Just like despite any lesson we do, right? There are going to be, continue to be people who, for whatever reason, because it doesn't align with their values or they don't see, don't have the right words or whatever, wherever they're stuck, people continue to do other actions. And I agree with you, that's where we need to think about where that accountability comes into place. And so that has to happen at the school leadership level. It also has to happen at that regional level as a support to ensure that everyone is given the tools and also the leeway to do this work.
So where is the accountability measures now? Do we have that set up or is that in process?
That, those are the things that are in process this year that was, was not in existence before. And hearing from our community and hearing as we grew this program that we know we need more of that. So the very first thing we did was that first meeting to be clear. So we sent out what we called, this is a educational jargon. I'll say it, then I'll explain it. We call it our tights and our loose. Tights are things that must happen. Loose is where you can be creative. And so we were crystal clear this year around the tights and the loose of the equity lead and the principal partnership. What are the things that must happen? And then here's where you get flexibility. For example, small things that we heard from our community. And again, it was a new, it was a new initiative. And principals were still trying to wrap their head around how to leverage this person. But we heard things like, the community isn't, isn't even aware of who our equity lead is. So that's very, we made that crystal clear in one of our tights. Introduce your equity lead to your community. Where we made it loose is how you might do that. Whether you call a town hall, whether you have a PTA meeting. So the tight is, ensure that your community understands who your equity lead is. We had other suggestions in there that were tight and loose. Another tight was the formation of an equity team. So many schools, the equity team up until this year was a very robust team, very diverse in its perspective. And we had some schools that had not stepped into the ring yet, to be quite honest. The equity team consisted just of the principal and the equity lead. And so this year, the tight was, you have an equity team. And in addition to that tight was that you need to include community representation. That's never been an expectation before, as well as you need to include a student or student voice in your equity team. Now, the loose was frequency, what's the goal? Using your data from your equity audit to help you think about how this group operates? Whether you use an existing team. There are lots of teams and committees. And I'll, I'll speak with my former principal hat on. We don't want to create a team just to create a team, right? So if you have a robust team already, can you shift their identity to be very crystal clear? This is now the equity team, and they have a specific charge. So that's just one way we increased accountability this year is with that tight and that loose. And spending time, we spent about, we spent a whole morning with our equity leads and principals unpacking that and making sure everyone understood expectations. Now we're in implementation phase. And now we need to have discussions about what that looks like to monitor that and how do we know it's being effective? And that's where we are in process right now and continuing that work as well. And so those are things we hope to share soon. I see Dr. Ivy also has.
Dr. Ivy.
Sure. So thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamara, for that question. And we definitely know that we need to make sure that we have additional accountability and monitoring measures in place. And so as Ms. Smith said, the first step was identifying what the expectations are. And we did that with the principals and equity leads. And we've done that with our region office staff being, were involved in the meeting as well. And then we'll be following up with further explanations and checks throughout the year and supports for those schools and teams where it's not working or they aren't meeting our expectations. I think we could expound a little more on this in the presentation in October around equity and bring you some additional information and, and specifics.
I, I, I would really appreciate that. And I know in my tenure, I've received a number of complaints from families or students or even staff members where they felt a particular issue had not been handled appropriately. And I think in light of the fact that we're trying to shift the culture here, we really have to talk about how, what that looks like and empowering the ways of those feel that they have not been redressed.
Yeah, we agree. And so that is something that we're working on. And we're starting with just the expectations. And we'll definitely bring some additional thoughts around that in October.
So I'm on your go-back. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. First, did you call me?
Hi, can you hear me? Because I didn't mute anything else. Okay, Ms. Marin, you're up.
Thank you, thank you. So after so many months of dealing with global pandemic and all sorts of other crises, it is so refreshing to see the work done to address such a fundamental challenge in our schools, for our community members. I just, I, I'm so glad to see this work. And I think it was actually supposed to come to us in June. And because of our return to school planning, it got bumped and bumped. But, um, you know, as I drive around the Hundred Mill District or bike or walk, I see many signs about honoring lives, rejecting hate, and confirming the value of all human beings. And I know that this work you've presented today is the bearing out of those beliefs of constituents. And, you know, this is a human rights issue. It's a civil rights issue. And I liked the state's visual of the five Cs. But we are here to teach. The curriculum and how we teach it is central. So this is just, I, I'm just thrilled. And the level of work that has been done is astounding. So I want to say I'm pleasantly, I, I'm glad that the context has been set so wide. It's not just anti-racism, it's anti-bias. Because that does capture, leaves all that space to capture all of the ways in which people and stories and histories get slighted. So, um, so thank you for doing that. And, you know, I think mentioning, as, as was said about ability and neurodiversity, there is space here to reflect everyone in it and teach our children to be tolerant and knowledgeable. So I just wanted to say I'm astounded that a third of the resources in SCPS's curriculum had been deemed as harmful. Again, that just underscores how critical this work is, that we can't spend another day giving harmful curriculum to our students and teachers. And I'm glad to see the updates about the state level, but also need to point out that this work was two years in the making here in Fairfax. this work was two years in the making here in Fairfax. And we're seeing now from the state, these calls for changes to standards and such, which is wonderful. And you know, the partnerships with other organizers, other school districts and such, and our, just the Smithsonian, other partners is, it's exactly the kind of caliber of education that the public expects from us to prepare our students for a world where all of, you know, different people exist. I, I would love to see, I, I am eager to see the budgetary requests. So please do provide the full requests so we can see how to accelerate and widen this work. I think it's commendable that it began in the social studies department, but clearly there are implications in many disciplines. So I'd like to know what is, what is the menu here of what it would take to do this as quickly as possible? Um, you know, Dr. March, as, as you said, Ms. Eddy has been fabulous and she's one person, just like every staff member. What do, um, how can the board remain updated on the progress made? Because this kind of work is, is stuff that we should know about. Um, and I'm eager to work on the anti-racist policy and updating other related policies that hinder this work. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Uh, Ms. Tolan?
Yes, hello, thank you. Oh, but I did, Mr. First, I did want to know about um, you know, the budgetary implications. Will they be submitted in full? And then how can we remain updated on the progress, please? If maybe Dr. Presidio could speak to that.
Sure.
I think probably the easiest thing to do on the budget request would be to do that as a next step um so that we could get that in detailed information for you in writing. So we'll be happy to do that. And then we certainly can provide ongoing updates um on the work. Probably the next opportunity to do that will be the October uh board work session where we're going to discuss uh some of the additional equity work. And we certainly can think about other ways to do that uh both in writing um and in a future work session opportunities for discussion as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, um, thank you for this good work. And I did have a couple of questions. Uh, well, one comment actually um regarding that, looking at this as an interdisciplinary look. And um it's especially having spent years uh working around the science side of the uh, the Virginia Studies in fourth grade. All of that work is so interdisciplinary and really, really, really needs to be interdisciplinary. So I say that as a um, a support for um, you know, looking at this. If we were changing what's happening in social studies, we really need to look at the science curriculum as well. And um, the language arts curriculum since they're also intertwined. And that's just one example. Um, one question that I had, I was excited to hear about the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative and the work that's being done there. And you talked a little bit about the assessment reform that uh is being worked on there. I was wondering if you could just elaborate on that a little bit and potentially um if you see any impact on um SOL testing as a result of that work at the state level.
So there's been over the course of the last few years, um, a desire at the state level to shift from standardized tests for accountability to performance assessments as accountability measures. And um the things have kind of vacillated to and fro at the General Assembly um on that matter. But most recently, um, the Virginia Department of Education is looking into um, is, is intending to pilot um some performance assessments that use the inquiry design model. And um, once they have enough data to, to calibrate rubrics and kind of go through, I don't want to get in the weeds, but to kind of um prepare those performance assessments for scalability, then school divisions will have the option of using performance assessment for a verified credit in US Virginia history, uh, the, the high school course. And there are some benefits and drawbacks to that, namely that kids will have already taken, most kids will have already taken standardized tests in World History one and two by that time. Um, but any movement toward performance assessment is a, a positive movement in, in my opinion because the kind of learning that we're asking for, inquiry-based learning that promotes critical thinking cannot be sufficiently measured by standardized tests. And in order to really encourage those shifts in everyday practice in our schools, we'd love to see more attention to performance assessment at the state level. So I hope that answers your question. Um, but yes, the, the Virginia Department of Education has drafted um performance assessment using the inquiry design model. And they'll be piloting in order to scale that work um opt-in um for Virginia's, uh, sorry, US Virginia history at high school. Um, we already have, you know, performance assessments. We have performance assessments across grade levels in social studies. Actually, we didn't showcase that work here, but we have had multiple decline cohorts across grade levels and have developed dozens and dozens of performance-based assessments that are curriculum embedded and promote inquiry-based learning in the classroom that go beyond what I described with the inquiry design model. There's a, there, there is a lot there. I'm happy to share about that work if the board is interested.
Thank you. I appreciate that. As the proponent of inquiry-based learning and the number of really great initiatives we already have in instructional services, I'm happy to support that work. Um, I, I wanted to get a little bit more information. Happy to follow Karen Keys-Gamara, who asked questions about the equity teams and the expectations there. Really, really excited to hear about the student ambassadors. And um, wondering if you could share if there have been, uh, I just have particular expectations for those students and what they'll be involved in.
Hi, sure. I can, I can answer more about the student ambassadors. So yes, we have shared with all high school principals. We met with them both um in their high school principal association meetings. And then we shared information and infogram about um how to look for students. Not your, we're not looking, this is not another leadership class where we want the student that's involved in everything. We're looking for students that have a perspective that may not, we may not listen to. So we gave guidance on um collection of student ambassadors and also their, when that's due. And then following that, there'll be a series of um learning opportunities with our team in which that's when we will provide them additional um ways to connect with one another. We might, we will be partnering with other organizations to bring them speakers. So we're really excited, but that's a brand new initiative. And right now we are in the implementation stage of identifying students. And we've also shared principles, the expectations that these students um should have a voice and are a member of the equity team and will attend this learning with our team as well.
Great. I'd like to just say on top of how that's working, because I think that's a model that can be utilized in a number of other areas. I mean, Get to Green is a good example or um, you know, other important areas in, in the schools where we need student input. So somehow if we can put that as a next step, staying on top of that, that would be great. Um, I just wanted to make one other comment and that's, this is back to um page 14. I of course support um having a policy that um, you know, where our staff can support rejecting racism, anti-bias um and exclusion. Um, but I look forward to the conversations that we will have around um, you know, situations where our staff um, you know, need to remain impartial. And I say that again with my interest in, you know, really cultivating students and being able to explore their own opinions and, you know, ideas. And so, I mean, that's a broader topic, but I just want to mention that as, you know, the conversations that I look forward to having around this. And um, that is it for my list right now.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Uh, up next we have Ms. Amesh.
Thank you. Um, and I'll start by saying thank you to, to staff for working on this and, and for this really important topic. Um, I'm excited to see a number of the developments that have been shared. I especially appreciated hearing the emphasis uh on not only removing harm but infusing narrative and, and sharing different experiences and stories. Um, and, and uh, I'm happy to see the objectives as well in, in, in a way that we're trying to be inclusive. Um, I had a couple of questions and then a couple of points. I'm sure I'm going to need to go back. But um, the first question is regarding a timeline. This is uh related to what someone said that they'd like to follow up on. The second is a two-part question really. The first, what, what are the um methods or, or values that are guiding us in, in how we prioritize? What uh to, what to tackle, first of all? So what's most important, what's most pressing? Um, and then which experiences to elevate? Um, I, in just seeing, you know, I, I um, I won't comment further on why I'm asking, but I'll leave that question there. Um, and then the third question is uh, our, our process for identifying resources or models. Um, what considerations do we have? And, and if, if at all, what vetting processes exist, do that kind of thing? Um, so I'll pause there to hear answers. Ms. Amesh, could you repeat your second question? I apologize that it cut out. Oh, um, sorry about that. Okay. So the second question had to do with uh how we prioritize the work and it's two parts. One is the what, so what's more important, what's more pressing in what we tackle? And the second is which experiences or narratives um do we choose to elevate or emphasize more, what guides that? Um, so I, I hope that captured what you guys missed. There were three questions.
So thank you, Ms. Amesh. I'm going to go ahead and start and then I'll invite others um to contribute their thoughts as well. Um, I do think we can help you with the timeline and Ms. Eddy might be able to provide some information about, you know, some of the work that we shared that's underway right now with respect to um US history courses, for example, at the secondary level and what the timeline for that work is. Um, of course, you know, there's a lot of other information that we shared about work that needs to happen around anti-bias lesson development as well and a lot of the different areas that we described. Um, so we can provide you maybe as a next step with more detailed timeline information um that gets into some of the broader work that we're doing. In terms of, you know, I, I think the values of where, where we start with the work, a lot of that is informed by the use of the cultural responsiveness design tool that we looked at together and the five different areas really that, you know, that we're trying to look at our curriculum through. So you know, as Dr. March said, um, we've used that tool very broadly um in our curriculum department and instructional services to really investigate and really um take a look at where we might have areas that are problematic. And, and we certainly have identified quite a few. And we believe all of our areas of curriculum certainly can, you know, be enhanced and improved. But using that tool allowed us to really identify some of the areas that were the most problematic, um, such as, you know, Virginia Studies is an area where we really realized that we needed to, you know, expedite and focus the work on. So I think that tool helps us a lot in terms of applying that tool to the areas to help us identify where to start. And I think that tool also helps us really prioritize those narratives that, you know, that you were kind of, you know, asking, you know, you know, which narratives are we choosing to, to value? Part of that is making sure that we're valuing the multiple perspectives of all of our students in our classes, right? And you heard our teachers, I think in that video, talk a little bit about, you know, the insights that students have when they have the opportunity to stop and think critically and, you know, advocate for, for issues that are important to them on issues that are important to them. So it's really again, using that, that resource to help us think about, you know, who are the students in our classes um that we're teaching every day? And, and what are the narratives that are important to them that need to be heard and shared across, you know, the entire class? So again, I think that tool is really powerful in helping us think through this work from a variety of different perspectives. Um, and I know in the interest of time, we might need to move on, but if any other folks have other um thoughts that you want to contribute, please feel free to do so. If not, we'll go on to your next question.
I, I would agree with everything Dr. Presidio um just shared. And maybe to get just slightly more into the weeds, um, certainly we relied on our own disciplinary expertise as well as the expertise of, you know, museum and university stakeholders to look critically at our standards um and to identify uh the most pressing areas where our standards are either telling an incomplete or inaccurate story. Um, an example might be the way that our standards teach about the history of enslavement, um, sometimes going so far as to appear to rationalize enslavement on economic grounds, suggesting that Virginia's agrarian economy required cheap or free labor. Um, thus the Africans quote unquote arrived. Um, the places in our standards that erase um the experiences and life and contributions of native peoples during whole particular historical eras, um, suggesting that native peoples only existed in earlier pre-contact or um before the closing of the frontier in the late 19th century. Um, I would also say, you know, sometimes it's not just about what we teach, but how we teach, where we prioritize. Um, what uh, what, what we uh target for transformation. You know, I, I think the, the things that have made up my identity as a learner sometimes are, are emotionally laden experiences. And I think when we talk about the practice of Colonial Day, that was not written anywhere in our curriculum standards, but that emotionally laden experience of a student dressing up and appearing to celebrate a period of colonization, um, that can define the discipline and the student's relationship to their classroom or school in ways that are high impact. And so um, that would be an additional, um, yes, an additional area. And just to echo what Dr. Presidio said about our students and families, um, when we're thinking about what to include, it's not just that question, it's also how do we stop excluding? And so how do we open up our curriculum? Not necessarily trying to tokenize and represent with some kind of approach of quotas, um, but rather how do we ensure that our curriculum is openly inviting the experiences um of our students and their families um in the way that we frame questions and assessments in the way that we frame texts?
Thank you. Um, and then my, my third question, I don't know if maybe it got cut out. Um, in terms of, well, I, I mean, I guess you guys addressed it, so I can drop that question. Um, a couple of thoughts. So I, I appreciate, you know, the points you um, you brought up about uh, you know, the resources you use. One thing I, that worries me is um that resources for a lot of these narratives um aren't always the ones that are going to pop out at you, right? They're not necessarily backed by community advocacy groups are going to speak to it. They're not necessarily um, to the level of institutional um, you know, uh, development in our country, you know, more broadly, more specifically, uh, to even have the resources or the language or the narrative to, to be able to elevate those voices. Um, and I ask myself, all right, who are we serving? Who are the students in our buildings? Uh, and, and there are a lot of intersections there with, with what's not necessarily the loudest push for curriculum development. Um, but that is, you know, communities that are represented in our schools. So that's something that I want to make sure we're constantly thinking about and considering. Um, and then even in removing harm, um, some of my colleagues touched on how it's broader than just social studies, of course. And I know you guys know that and, and it's a matter of resources and capacity at some point. But in, in, in topic areas we might not even think about, right, PE and music. I saw PE, um, a number of other things I would add, but um, music and other domains that we may not have considered.
Ms. Amesh, did you end with a question there?
I, I'm happy to have anyone address that.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, girl.
So I think for now, I would just say, you know, we tried to identify and just share some of the places where we do have work underway, like in language arts, for example, uh, like in our library programs, like in our um, you know, digital citizenship resources, family life education. So we definitely agree um that these issues are, need to be a part. Um, addressing these issues need to be a part of all of our content areas. So we've got a lot more work to do there. Um, I think you captured it really well when you said, you know, it's really a capacity issue. And um, that's not to make an excuse. Um, we know that we have a lot of work to do. Um, and a lot is underway, but uh, there's, there's still, there still remains a, a lot for us to, um, to continue to, to focus on and continue to improve across all the content areas.
Thank you, Mr. Presidio. Thank you, Ms. Amesh. Up next we have Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. McLaughlin? Seems there's a reconnection issue here. We'll give her one second to reconnect, Ms. McLaughlin. All right, we will go to Ms. Bukarski and we'll pick up Ms. McLaughlin next, um, as she's able to reconnect. Ms. Bukarski?
Thank you. Um, I, I want to thank staff for all your hard work. You know, I, I received my master's in multicultural, multilingual education in 2002. Um, and, and I don't take you down memory lane, just, just, you know, for the sake of it. Um, but it, just to say that these nascent ideas at the time, um, you know, when we had just started talking about them um as part of education and to see that we are now, you know, in 2020 and we are doing this work with intentionality, um, I think speaks to the urgency of what is happening um, and, and the need for what you all are doing and have been doing. Um, so I, I, I want to thank you for your hard work. Um, and I, this was very informative and very um impressive. And I know you've been all working um very hard. One of, you know, I think somebody, um, you know, we talked about PD and, you know, professional development around um these ideas and, and this curriculum. And um, you know, I'd like to hear more a little bit about how we're also going to um engage not just our staff, but also our communities and our parents um about this, what may seem like a shift to some and who don't. understand it. How will that happen? And I would, I would think some communities need this more than others. So, could you talk a little bit about how that is gonna be incorporated? And I'm sorry if you did, I had to step away for a little bit during this presentation.
No, Ms. Pekarski, that's a great question, and we did not speak to that. And I apologize, it's a little awkward in these virtual meetings to know who's gonna speak first, so it's like we're stepping on each other's toes. I certainly would invite Colleen to speak a little bit about some of the work that we do and have done in the communities where we're doing some of this curriculum revision work. So, part of the professional development work that we did in the Rethinking Virginia Studies cohort, for example, there was information and support to schools about how to engage their community in that transformation process, so that people would understand why it was important, what we were doing, and how we could create better learning experiences by doing the work. And then, certainly, I would invite Leona, if she has any comments, in terms of the work that she often supports in terms of parent and family engagement as well. So, if you have any thoughts, I'd certainly invite you to share those.
We're always communicating with community members, holding meetings and engaging through emails and that kind of thing, but I think you're talking about something more systemic. Dr. Presidio did talk about our real intentionality to engage school-based administrators, to engage the PTSA, to engage our community, and the shift around Colonial Day. And there were many conversations, of which I will never be fully aware, that happened at the school-based level to make that, to make that shift. But I do know that more work is necessary and in terms of community engagement, and I do see this opportunity for the revision of the standards to have kind of a double-track approach, where the community has the opportunity to recommend to the state and also to us what changes need to happen at a system level for social studies education. And so, we, as I mentioned, I think in the presentation, that we would really like to help facilitate that process with the community. And of course, with the idea of topical anti-bias lessons, I believe some community engagement would be really essential there as well.
Dr. Braybrand, did you raise your hand?
Yes, Mr. Frisch, just real briefly, Ms. Pekarski, one of the things, just in the last several weeks, we have really come to understand is how powerful town halls are. Of course, a lot of it's been focused around return to school, but we just met and reviewed in cabinet the need to do more town halls first on more topics like this, to bring the community into the conversation, to hear from our FCPS folks who are working in schools, working directly with teachers. We also talked about, and Leona, of course, can speak to it as well, but I've reviewed a proposal about expanding town halls in Arabic, in Korean, in other languages, to really make sure the community knows, we wanna hear from you, we wanna understand your perspective. We've done a few in Spanish, and I am a minimally proficient Spanish speaker, but we recognize we've gotta do a lot more of it in more languages and on more topics. And I think this is an excellent area to both build awareness and to get feedback on the work we're doing, and to share with everybody what we are doing. So, we'll work to put some dates out and share this work in the fall.
Yeah, I think that's a very important piece of this, not only to, you know, hear from our families and their experiences, which I find very valuable, especially as we are doing this work, but also to understand our community and to do some reteaching, because, you know, for a lot of us who did take fourth grade, you know, social studies, these are not the perspectives, this is not what we learned growing up. So, it is a learning curve for many parents as well as children. Another thing I wanna touch upon, if I have time left, is, you know, we've got the statistics about the experiences of our students. I have students, I hear the anecdotal feedback from my kids about, you know, how the words we use sometimes that students are using, the things that are happening, and how, how we are going to teach, maybe within our health curriculum, you know, about bias and anti-bias, and what do you do when you, if we already do, let me know. I don't know that we do with intentionality, but teaching kids, you know, how to get help, what to do, what to say, when to be able to even, you know, pinpoint that that is happening around them. I would love to know a little bit about that, and what direction we'll be taking.
So, just real briefly, I would say that we do have information similar to that as part of our health curriculum. And additionally, one of our board members in this presentation, I'm forgetting who, I apologize, mentioned the need to make sure that we're doing this work as part of our social emotional curriculum development and expansion of learning opportunities. And we are working with the team that's leading that work to incorporate some of this work into that curriculum as well. So, we have some things in place and more under development. So, again, you know, we'd be happy to share more specific examples with you, if that's something you'd be interested in offline.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pekarski. We'll go back to Ms. McLaughlin.
Am I coming through now, Carl?
You sure are. Go ahead.
Hallelujah. So, I just want to just make a few comments. First of all, very much appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. For the public who's listening, this is something that the prior board, we worked on with intentionality, particularly Ms. Corbett Sanders and I met with Ms. Eddy and several constituents in the Braddock District who were concerned about some of the hate and bias, antisemitic things that were happening in our schools, and the belief that so much of this comes from how do we really engage in these important conversations? And when the board, the prior board created The Portrait of a Graduate, one of the key components was the global citizen, global and ethical citizen. And I can't think of anything more important than having this type of anti-bias, anti-racism, anti-hate instruction, as well as holistic dialogues. What Karen Keyes-Gamaris said is true, how do we embed this in the very beginning, then children enter our doors and see the beauty and the diversity of our community? And part of it is looking at the history of our nation, of our global society, and understanding where we've been, where we've come from, the progress we've made, but the progress we need to continue. And so, for the public, I wanted them to know that this wasn't just a reaction to recent events. This has been something that faithfully is coming along at a very important time. But I also want to really encourage what Dr. Presidio said, this is about embedding it in social media as well. We know that it takes courageous conversations, and as Ms. Pekarski stated, for a lot of us during our younger years, this isn't the kind of communication and community engagement dialogue that we would have in our formative years. And now, we're parents, and we're looking at ways to, you know, not only engage in this dialogue with each other, but with our children. And so, I see the value of public education really helping us create these holistic and important conversations. So, I look forward to Dr. Braybrand and his team continuing to update the public and the board about this continued work. I do definitely want to emphasize that this would be about elective coursework, which I think has been really emphasized here today. We're looking at embedding this in a way. And finally, as someone with a bachelor's in history, American history, I wanna say thank you for engaging the Smithsonian, and I would just say, I think that's gonna be important as we help people understand that this is rooted in primary sources when we examine and refocus our historical teachings. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Cohen?
I wanted to say thank you to all the staff. Carl and I really enjoyed getting to work with you all on this, and the work that is being done is remarkable, and it's such a nice opportunity for us to get an opportunity to show off all the work that goes behind the scenes in helping us build a real community of neighbors. And I'm grateful that we aren't afraid to have these conversations. I think that we long in this system for fear of not knowing if it was okay to talk about something, made the error in deciding to silence what was right and what was appropriate when we think about how we talk and think about one another. And that has definitely been to the detriment of our kids in this system. And I'm really grateful to have this opportunity to be a part of a paradigm shift in how systems can really teach their students and their staff and their administrators how we can be really culturally responsive, and again, more understanding and inclusive of all of our neighbors and the backgrounds and the perspectives that everybody brings, which is why I will say, you know, my husband and I moved here 20 years ago to have a very different experience than we did growing up in Georgia. And I'm appreciative to get to see, as the parent of two FCPS kids, such a mindset shift. And I do think that it takes a lot of courage from all of you, and I'm so grateful for it. You know, my comments would be, I agree with the accountability piece. I think that there are so many staff that reach out to me that say, you know, I want to be able to talk about this, I don't know how, I don't know what's okay. And I really see, from the administrator perspective, I appreciate you all seeking a policy, because I think what happens is we wind up at the discretion of administrators who are just on quicksand, they feel like. And it's our opportunity to give a solid floor underneath them to say, this is the expectation, this is what's reasonable, and this is how we're gonna support you in doing this. And I think having that work happen along with our equity leads is really key. One thing, though, that I would really hope we can do is maybe using some of our exit-ticket strategy, which I love, with our students, when we're using new curriculum and with our staff as well, what's your exit ticket after teaching this lesson? What would you tweak? What worked, what didn't? And students too, because they really do feel it. And I think the conversations that have happened in our house about, as Jewish kids, being surprised at the way the Holocaust is talked about has been eye-opening. So, I appreciate all the diversity of opinions and thoughts on all of this, and thanks for your work.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. I will take the privilege now and speak for my bit. I wanna thank everybody for their work on this. I know a lot of work has gone into it, which is clear from the presentation, and I'm not gonna repeat what others have said, only that, you know, in the months before being sworn in to the board, and in the few months that we had before the closure, I was fortunate enough to meet with most of the GSAs, the Gay-Straight Alliances, Gender Sexuality Alliances throughout Fairfax County Public Schools. And in meeting after meeting with these students, I heard stories about why they weren't reporting instances of anti-LGBTQ bias. They would see these things happening, they would experience these things happening in front of teachers and administrators, and who wouldn't do anything. And, you know, we know from the conversations we've been having this year, and the things that we've seen students sharing on social media, but the same can be said for issues of bias and racism. And so, you know, I think as we look at a potential policy around anti-racism, anti-bias curriculum, we clearly also need to address the controversial issues policy. So, as we discuss in the, in the do-outs from this meeting, I hope that we'll include that in the conversation. We'll now go to go-backs. In the interest of time, I'd like to try and keep them to 45 seconds, if at all possible. I'll give a little bit of leeway, but please keep it to 45 seconds. And because there is a scheduling issue, we're gonna go to Rashna Sizemore Heiser first. Rashna, Ms. Heiser?
Thank you, Carl. Mr. Frisch, thank you for being flexible with my other leadership team meeting, I have to hop off for a few minutes. Really quickly, I agree with the accountability piece, I've heard this from students and staff, so I wanted to see if there's ways, and this might be a next steps, to embed some of this work in our strategic plan and the reporting around the metrics of the strategic plan, as well as school improvement plans. So, in terms of both achievement goal one and caring culture, I'm wondering if there's more ways to tie this work together to that as our anti-racist curriculum. The other piece I wanted to mention is, I would, when we're talking about the policy change, I wholeheartedly support the policy change around letting our staff feel a little more free to discuss these topics. I just wanna make sure that we're putting in safeguards, because as, like the rest of us, we all have different opinions, we all make sure we keep those conversations safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heiser. Up next, we have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Three points quick. I'd like to put a motion on the table for us to send to governance the work on an anti-bias, anti-racist policy. Secondly, I would like to hear from staff about the role of the equity leads and the equity ambassadors in ensuring that we have equity in our discipline and equity in our access to opportunities. And then, the third piece, I sent this to Dr. Braybrand before, but I'd like to hear from staff, the practicality of being able to offer a dual enrollment in African-American history, similar to what is being talked about at the state level, but a dual enrollment course makes, kind of is an incentive, because it also gives our kids the opportunity to get college credit. So, if I could have answers to those three, or those two points, and then a motion on the government, sending to governance the policy.
Sure, I can help speak too about the equity lead and principal role in terms of discipline procedure. So, as part of that equity audit, that is part of that audit is looking at data across your school and crafting a plan with that. So, in addition to that plan, it actually ties nicely into what you said around school improvement plans. I believe you said that, maybe someone else did, around every school this year, as part of their school improvement plan, was expected to create an access and opportunity goal. So, after looking through that equity audit, looking at data, to ensure that there's a goal that addresses access and opportunity. The SRNR has changed this year, and I know we talked a little bit about that when Carrie Williams presented. So, the other role that the principal plays, or the administrator in the building, is, and they recently all went to professional development on that new decision-making process. So, there is a decision-making protocol that asks, the very first question that it asks is, have you considered unconscious bias in this situation before you move forward? It is the first question they must answer. And the second piece that is new this year, that you are aware that we're piloting in some schools, is that central way of maintaining data. So, hopefully, as we move this forward, when we scale that to the whole division, having that central repository of data around teacher referrals gives schools a very clear picture of impact of this work. Right now, schools have a lot of choice, probably a little bit too much choice around how they capture data. And so, moving from that pilot approach to that system-wide approach to data keeping will support that. So, to answer, yeah, in summary, to answer your questions, as part of that equity team, they should be looking at this audit, creating access and opportunity goals, as well as administrators have been engaged in professional development that ask the question, have you considered unconscious bias in discipline? I don't know if anyone else would like to add?
I would just add, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and once the access and opportunity goals have been developed, the regions will be reviewing the whole plan and the sit plan, as well as then specifically monitoring the practice.
And the next piece on dual enrollment?
Yes, we actually have already initiated conversations with the community college staff on that, and we actually are hoping to have a meeting set up soon. We're in the process of trying to get that scheduled for discussion on that. So, we'll certainly loop back with you, because we know that you're very involved. So we'll certainly loop back with you, because we know that you're very involved with the ongoing advocacy and support for expansion of dual enrollment, which we really appreciate. So stay tuned. Hopefully, we'll have some updates on that soon.
Thank you. And if I can just ask for the board members to be updated on the opportunity goals?
Yes.
All good news. You're making a happy woman.
You got all your questions answered?
Yes.
So we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Corbett Sanders to direct the governance committee to write a draft anti-bias, anti-racist policy. Do we have a second? But Melanie's picture popped up first. So Melanie, did you raise your hand?
I did.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, do you need to speak to your motion?
Yes, this is a long time coming. This is something that I have been speaking to staff with for a long period of time over the past couple of years. And governance is the appropriate place in our structure to actually take this on. And I have absolute confidence that we will prioritize this as a policy that needs to be developed quickly and brought to the full board in a work session so that it can be adopted by the full board. And as you know, equity is at the forefront of the priorities, I think, of every member of this board. And you can't address equity unless you address anti-racist, anti-bias.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Marin, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly to say, I support this. And I also want to offer a motion about the related policy that was mentioned. So as a point of order, Mr. Fresh, can you provide me with some guidance about how to best do that? This was to also put to governance the policy on controversial issues, that policy as well?
We can take that as a separate motion.
Point of order?
Go ahead.
Just, that is not a new policy. That is within governance's role to review existing policies. And so, because it's an
My understanding from previous conversations is that unless the policy is up for review, we do need board guidance to take it from its normal calendar.
All I'm saying is that it can, what I'm suggesting is that it's not a new policy, but rather a
I'm aware. And I'm voicing it here, Ms. Corbett Sanders, because I wasn't sure if it would be a follow-on motion or not to your motion, but I understand it's separate and I wholeheartedly support your motion.
Yeah. All right. We're not there yet. All right. We'll now take a vote. Everybody's hands down, please. All those in favor of directing the governance committee to draft an anti-bias, anti-racism policy for review by the full board, please signify by raising your hand. We have Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Marin, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Kiesgumara, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Sizemore Heiser and Mr. Fresh. That's unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
That's great.
All right. Next on the go-back list is, one second, I have Dr. Yep, Dr. Anderson, you're up next.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to get my video up. One of the things that I wanted to ask is that I noticed there was plenty of opportunity for staff development, for school staff, et cetera. What opportunities exist for the school board to engage in its own continuous reflection in this work?
That is a fantastic question. And we welcome providing the board with any of our modules. We think it would be a wonderful learning opportunity for you to engage in that time. We know that your time is important. You have many, neat decisions to make. But we agree that if we could do some work together and have some common understanding would be a great use of time. So if you'd like that to be a follow-on, we would happily suggest dates and times. And we can bring you any of the modules, any of the cohort. We think all of it would be very, you would fall in love with the work that we're doing. So we look forward to that.
I would definitely love to champion that and hopefully to get the support of the rest of the board to engage in this really important work. But I think we'll have to get everybody else to agree to it. The other quick question that I had is regarding, as we're talking about who we're talking about during all of these slides, making sure that we are addressing all of our student populations. We have a very diverse population in Fairfax County. And I don't think I heard anything regarding our Native American population, our Muslim population, our immigrants, our Asian student population. Just ensuring that the curriculum changes are also encompassing those groups.
Not major ones. So far, the two new classes that we have that we updated this summer seem to be going pretty well, especially the data analytics class.
Besides more Heiser, your mic is on. If I could have somebody address my question?
I would just say briefly, we definitely agree with you. And that is the intention of the curriculum review work and design work that we're doing. And again, I think, you know, a lot of what we're trying to do is make sure that we recognize and celebrate the stories of all of the students in our schools and in our classrooms. And we're trying to do that through a number of different methods. And certainly curriculum representation is one of those. So again, we have a lot more work to do, but we certainly agree with you that that is a major priority for the curriculum revision work.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Fresh.
What's your motion, Dr. Anderson?
I wanted to be sure that we directed the governance committee to review the controversial issues policy. I think it was brought up by Ms. Marin just a little while ago, but we kind of dropped it a bit. So I would like to make that motion or second Ms. Marin's motion to it.
We'll have Ms. Marin second it, I guess. Her hand is up already. Do you want to speak to your motion, Dr. Anderson?
I think we've already covered it. So very briefly, this is important work that we just need to have done. And so I'll leave it at that.
All right. Ms. Marin, would you like to speak to your second?
Nope, I just seconded. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of directing the governance committee to review the controversial issues policy, please signify by raising your hand electronically, because I won't be able to see it otherwise. All right, we have Ms. Marin, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Kiesgumara, Ms. Darnett Kofax, welcome back. And Mr. Fresh, that is unanimous. All right, moving along. Up next on our go-backs is Ms. Kiesgumara.
Forty-five seconds is quite the challenge. Okay, I'm going to start with looking at the board's opportunity to continue to have output. And so I don't know if we need a motion for that or whether it's simply a next step to make sure that we are able to have to continue. I'm sorry, I heard somebody else speaking. It didn't sound like a board member, did it? Okay, I'll just continue. The next question I have has to do with who's doing these audits. In our presentation, I talked about audits being done. And I'd like to get some explanation as to how we plan to do that. That was the question.
I'm happy to speak to the curriculum audits. So we, every summer advertise summer curriculum projects. And the audits have been advertised that way. And we really intentionally try to seek out teachers who represent a variety of interests and identities and cultures, backgrounds. So we had teachers from all, from a variety of different backgrounds, representative of schools across the school division, working on the audit. So like I said earlier in the presentation, we had about, over the course of two summers, 50 teachers who did this work together and stayed on from one summer to the next. So yes, this is a really intentional hiring for diverse perspectives.
Okay. I think I lost it a few seconds. So my last point has to do with the disparate impact. We have to have a continuous watch on the disparate impact of any new policy that we put forward. I'm a little concerned about, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesgumara. Up next, we're going to take Ms. Darnett Kofax for her first shot at addressing this topic. Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Hi, I'm sorry, my voice is a little off today, but I had to step away for a while. But so, but I did review the presentation and I don't want to repeat any questions that somebody has asked. But I do want to express my appreciation to staff who has done an excellent job at this. As Ms. McLaughlin spoke about, some of these things have been a long time coming. We, as a collective board, have been working on these issues, first with SKIPPED, first with Portrait of a Graduate, I would say, and then on the SKIPPED committee, and then coming to this point where we are able to, you know, put into motion all of the things presented here. I am thrilled to see this progress and I look forward to working with all of you. Staff will need to be instrumental in helping our board create policy, because you have, you know, started with, down the road with this curriculum. And I think it will be extremely important that we get your input as well as the community's input as we put forward this policy. But thank you all. And if I have further questions, I will follow up offline. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax. Next on our go-back, I have Ms. McLaughlin. Did you want to go back or was your hand up from before? I'm going to assume it was up from before. Same with Ms. Marin. I wrote them down when they were lingering.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we are done with our go-backs. And we can move into next steps. Ms. Corbett, do you want to make an announcement about that?
Carl, I did, I ran out of time. Is there any way I can mention my last point?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I really wanted to talk about the trauma of some of these experiences for kids and to make sure that that is part of our professional development. Oftentimes, I've received reports from kids and even staff members of situations that happen in the schools. And it is very clear to me that staff members do not know how to resolve those issues. And so as a next step, I would very much like to see specific information on how we're bringing our staff members up to speed so that kids are not re-traumatized when they have these kinds of either racist or other types of inappropriate encounters in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesgumara. Ms. Omeish?
Yeah, sorry, I thought you took note earlier. Thank you, Mr. Fresh. So just two points. One, I wanted to touch on, in addition to looking at, you know, Virginia, which I know we're doing on a state level, local narratives, I think, can also be powerful and showing our kids that these are things that are right here, our neighbors, right at home. So I would encourage consideration of that as we think about what to include. And the second point is, with the piece on staff accountability, I heard a lot of that and I was happy to, because it's not enough to just teach our kids, but to cultivate an environment for them. We have to consider, and this is next step really for us beyond the curriculum conversation, that structures hold people accountable, right? We have to have standards and not, I mean, not just consequences, but to think about disincentivizing that kind of behavior. It's not enough, I think, to just be professional development and everybody's going and accept it, right? So I look forward to where that goes in the future.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Ms. Cohen, did you want to say something about the next steps?
Yes, just that I'm furiously trying to type them in. And in the absence of our amazing head clerk, Bev and Ann are trying to scramble to make it look beautiful so everyone can see it. But I do have next steps from Ms. Marin, which were a budget request to fully implement this policy and process. I also have another one from Ms. Marin that's how will the school board be updated? I have one from Ms. Tolan asking about student participation and how to use it for other programs. And then I have one from Ms. Omeish asking for timeline information. Those are the only things where somebody mentioned specifically next steps. Is there something else that someone would like me to include in the document that I will get out in one minute?
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I would like to make sure that we added in my request for prioritizing this in our social emotional learning components, that we have an anti-racist, anti-bias piece there. And also that we have, we honor the request by staff to support a required lessons on anti-bias and anti-racism in our curriculum.
Is that, I guess, how, is that a, in what way would that be a next step? Like for implementing it into curriculum or what?
Yes, the staff asked for four things. One was they asked for the budget guidance. We continue to support it. They asked for us to continue to, they asked for budget guidance that we supported. They asked for us to continue their work in this important area. Third, they asked for us to extend this to other areas of our curriculum besides just civics or social studies, which, by the way, both, that is actually part of our, of the original forum topic, is that it extended beyond it. And then the last piece was to get guidance on requiring, so I guess this board needs to vote, on requiring lessons on anti-bias and anti-racism as part of our curriculum. Those were the four that I understand was the ask. Did I miss anything? Besides the policy piece?
I think you got everything that you've mentioned.
Okay. And that's really just kind of wrapping up what we'd been asked by staff.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Kiesgumara?
Thanks. Sorry, it took me a while to push the button. All of mine, I think, fall under the root, the topic of accountability to the board as well as accountability, I'm sorry, it is two different ones. One, we need to report back to the board with respect to how the accountability measures within our schools are going to, what structures are being set up for that. We also need to get accountability with respect to how we are dealing with our principals and making sure that equity leads have the authority that they need within our schools. And with respect to how we are addressing the potential trauma of these inappropriate actions and making sure that we have the appropriate professional development so that our staff members know how to resolve these issues without re-traumatizing our students.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesgumara. Was that it from you, Ms. Kiesgumara?
It is, it's all that I was able to get in in my minute and 45 seconds.
Okay. Dr. Anderson?
Just very quickly, the one next step that I had is to ensure that opportunities were provided to the board to engage in continuous reflection, just to be sure we have those provided to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Omeish?
Thank you. My other one was just about guidance for how staff will be handled or how we'll address situations where racist materials are taught or are presented in the classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Ms. Bukarski?
Sorry, I just wanted to see if we could add something about how we will be engaging parents and stakeholders. Sorry, I just wanted to see if we could add something about how we will be engaging parents and stakeholders as part of this ongoing conversation and updates.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Kiesgahmara?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I did want to ask the board about moving forward. In the explanation, a lot of the focus has been on fourth grade. And in my comments, I mentioned that we really need to get a hold of our students as they are entering our schools. I don't know whether this is a next step or something else, but I would really like to be able to get a plan as to how we can address the issues of anti-racism and expanded, expanding our curriculum to be more representative of our community in the earlier grade. So I turn that over to you as to the best way to get that done. I'm happy with a next step and a report to the board, but I think that that is really critical. By the time we get to fourth grade, opinions have already been formed and you're trying to correct them.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesgahmara. With that, we have no other next steps. Once we figure out the issue with the technology, we'll be sure to share that and people can send them in so that they can be added if there's something that was forgotten. With that, why don't we take a 10-minute break to four o'clock? That puts us about an hour behind, and we will pick up the conversation on our next issue. That gives time for people to go and rehydrate, re-caffeinate, and take care of personal business. Thanks, everyone.